We have everybody all right. Morning, everyone. Welcome to the September 23rd, 2025 Board of Supervisors meeting. As customary, we're gonna, well, first we'll call this meeting to order at 9:00 AM and then as customary, we'll start off with a moment of silence.
Yeah, last week Sue Conley passed away. She was just a fixture in the Cobb community and Middletown community. I knew her most of my life. Her family had a trailer in Pine Grove Resort, and then they built a home near Anderson Springs. She opened the bunk house in Middletown and ran that for decades before moving over to Twin Pine. And she was just a delight, a wonderful person in our community. And her family is, you know, appreciative that she's at peace now, but we will miss her. And I don't have details on her memorial yet, but they will be coming soon, so for Sue.
All right, any other? If not, so... Supervisor Sabate, could you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, we have item four, consideration of extra items not appearing on the posted agenda. None? Okay. And we have approval of the consent agenda. As in, as you know, consent agenda items are usually considered non-controversial. However, anyone from the board or anyone from the public can pull them for a later discussion. Is there anyone that would like to pull anything from the board? I'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone from the public that would like to pull a consent agenda item? All right, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve consent agenda items 5.1 through 5.5.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. All right, timed items. First, we have our public input. Public input is an opportunity for anyone to speak on something that's not on the current posted agenda. However, just know there can be no back and forth. We can't answer or give you any type of dialogue during this item. You will be given the opportunity to speak somebody afterwards, or we'll connect you with that person to ensure that your issue is dealt with. So you have three minutes. Please state your name for the record when you come up, and we'll go from there.
Good morning. My name is Kate Parankama. I live in the village of Nice, and I am a six-year immigrant from Los Angeles County. As my life partner and I were basically costed out of Los Angeles, and so we were particularly appreciative of both the semi-rural environment and the very community focus that Lake County has offered. And as such, we both come from a community and a family background where participating in public activities and support in neighborhood and larger community issues is as natural as basically worrying about whether you have clean socks. And that you need to be always in clean underwear. So we are very perturbed about the lack of perhaps enthusiasm for the proposed rent stabilization measure, as we find that close-at-hand friends and neighbors are imminently facing some difficult financial circumstances based upon the activities and recent acquisition by Harmony Communities of the Upper Lake Mobile Home Park known as Meadow Point. And these individuals, and as a group, particularly seniors, face just financial disarray. And we are asking that the board swiftly consider and pass the rent stabilization measure. We're talking about a financial entity that has over three dozen pieces of litigation against them over the last eight years. If you are an investor and you've been told repeatedly that past performance does not predict future behavior, that may be true in terms of investments. But in terms of business entity, we have someone in Harmony Communities that is not operating with very clean hands. And I think this measure is imperative. So I defer to my partner.
So, hi, my name is Lisa Wiley. I'm speaking on behalf of the residents of Meadow Point in Upper Lake.
One second. Do a pause, real quick. All right.
Sorry.
No, it's all right.
This is a beautiful thing that you hammered out but didn't ratify regarding mobile home park rent ordinance stabilization. However, our friends at Meadow Point recently received a letter that their space rent is going up to 950. So those that are in the park that make about $1,100 or possibly less on social security or SSI and who own their trailers there are now going to have most of their check going to a space rent. They've already had a space increase this year already, and now they're getting an increase of $350. So that's going to force them into homelessness. Their cats and dogs will probably go to the pound or just be loose on the street, and it's just unacceptable. It's unacceptable that Harmony, who's in litigation in San Jose, in San Joaquin, in Petaluma, in Windsor, in San Rafael, is gonna come up here to Lake County where your constituents live, not where Harmony, the people that own Harmony live, but where the voters of Lake County who've lived here their whole life are getting screwed. It's unethical, it's immoral, and it's just, it's crazy. So starting December 1st, these people, some of them who are behind me are gonna have to pay something they can't afford. They can't then afford car insurance or food or pet food or medicine or any other of their needs, or their pellets for their pellet stoves or anything. So I just urge you, so what's interesting, if I may speak a little more, when this was not ratified but posted, within days of this being hammered out, this letter goes out to the people saying your space rent's going up to $950. So it's like they slid under the radar knowing, they're aware that like counties statewide are hammering out these mobile home park ordinances trying to protect seniors. And what you wrote here is beautiful. It's beautiful. It says seniors can't get raised more than 3%. I mean, what you put on page one and two is just beautiful stuff, but it doesn't mean a thing now. Thank you so much.
We have to talk, because I can't answer you right now, but there's a lot of answers. All right. Come on up, sir.
My name is Nine Green. I live in Nice. I have three issues that I want to bring up. The first one is animal care and control. There are four basic plans or departments that, there's the euthanasia, which is the end stage, something that we all don't want to see happen. To avoid that, if the spay and neuter programs can be increased, that would cut down on the euthanasia. Vaccination programs are very important, and adoption programs are very important, very important also. My second issue is there is a burned-out home at 7229 East Butte Street. It's been six years. It hasn't been demolished. I've gone around and around with code enforcement, and they still haven't dealt with it. Those are the facts. This has been going on for over six years. We shouldn't have to wait for things to go on for so long. My third issue is CAL FIRE, fire prevention, fire mitigation. I read in the newspaper, the record be, two or three weeks ago, about the Spring Valley Bridge is only one lane. Does somebody have to die out there before there's a change? That fire in Spring Valley was over seven years ago. I'm in touch with the auditor. I'm trying to find out about the numbers, the money that's being taken in by Lake. There's also federal funding. I've been given paperwork by Genevieve Harrington. The property tax is $32.5 million. The budget for the Lake County Sheriff's Office and the jail approximately five years ago was $33 million. So they must be getting some federal funding. I'm just really fed up. I've lived here for 39 years in Nice, in the same home, the same issues. They just go on and on and on. They're never resolved.
All right, sir, your three minutes is up.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate your comments.
Hi, my name's Shanae Tebow. I've only been back in Lake County for about a year and two months. I wanted to speak about the Meadow Brook Mobile Homes, because I wanted you guys to see, it's not just the seniors being affected. It's young people like me that lives paycheck to paycheck. They've raised my rent three times in the last year that I've lived here. I'm going up to $1,040. I own my house, but I can't do much about it. And not only that, we have families that are talking to us about leaving California, because, and they own their homes, they can't do it because they have to provide for their children. They do this, I have letters stating that they would only do this 10% for us young ones, every March 1st. That's it. I have emails about it, because I argued with them. And then we got a letter, and it went up, March 1st. I went from six or five-something up to 690 now. And it just increases and increases. So I just wanted you to know, it's not just affecting the seniors. You're going to have a lot of homeless people, because I don't have anywhere to go.
Did you say Upper Lake?
Upper Lake.
Thank you.
Harmony.
All right. Come on up, sir. Yes. State your name for the record, and then we'll start your three minutes.
Okay. My name is Keith Luton. I also live in Meadow Point with the lovely people here. I've actually, I just bought a home there cash. It's the only place left in California that I can actually come up and be in a beautiful area and afford a home and be able to live so close to family members and whatnot. I'm still quite young, I hope. I'm 50, but I'm still quite young, I think. And we work hard for all of our money, and every single one of us do. It's just difficult for me to come to a community that feels like a good community, that feels like lovely people, that feels like most of you are from this community and they know what it's about as well. And to be able to see it taken away, I literally just purchased the home here. And the reason was, it was affordable to buy, I could own a home, have the American dream, and also still afford the space rent. But this coming up 350 right when I get here is gonna really knock it to me and to everyone else that's there. So it's young, it's old, it's middle, it's America is what it is. So I just ask that, you know, that you take it, T. Because I think most people here, a lot of them are from Meadow Point, that we are in a crisis situation with this type of issue going on. And ask that our community leaders help us out in this situation and help us fight back a bit against corporation that we can't afford to fight ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up.
Hello, I'm Catherine Passaccio. I've been a member of this community 40-plus years. The people that, these faces that I see, I want everyone to know the community that I get to live in. I get to live in the communicating crisis. We take care of each other. They go to food banks and share food. If they're allergic, they take care of each other, they drive each other to doctor's appointments. We are the people that make your coffee, that are first responders. We are the We are the people that you go to when your children have fevers and you need someone. We are this community, and there are so many scared faces. So please, if you think it's not your problem, it is, because we are you. So please, hear it. Hear it, please.
Good morning, Tom Lasik. I want to thank Chair Crandall for bringing that ordinance and to the board, and also thank the board for a willingness to put together a subcommittee. I was in the hearing when it was first introduced, and I was a little bit, I was considerably dismayed by the trivialization of the developers that own those parks and how they said, well, we just raised the rent only twenty-five bucks or thirty bucks. What's the problem? Well, as you can see, it's a misrepresentation of what's really going on, so that's one thing. And the other thing is, is that if you're a veteran on, you know, on a pension and you get your cost of living increase, statistically, on average, that's about forty bucks. So when they raised the rent forty bucks, even if that's what they did, that just wipes them out. And as you can see, for most of them, it's way, way more than that. If you're in social security and you're fortunate enough to actually even get a cost of living increase, again, the statistical average is about forty bucks a month. Bless you. Yeah, bless you. And again, it gets wiped out. So for those of us that have a career or, you know, can get a raise from employment and things like that, maybe it's not as significant. But now you're seeing that it's actually trickling down to more than just seniors. So I do encourage the board, and again, I want to thank Chair Crandall for stepping up and trying to make this right. And the sooner we do this, the better, because, again, thirty percent of our community is the mobile home parks. And there are predatory park owners that, that is their business model. Intimidation, threatening letters for eviction, trying to silence people. That's one of the reasons you're seeing the litigation in all those communities. Discrimination, it's not a happy picture. There's a lot of bad actors that have been moving into our county to take advantage of the situation. Thank you. Thank you. Any other public comment? Come on up, sir.
My name is Jeff Price. I live at Meadow Point. We got a rent increase up there of like thirty-five dollars this year. And now we got this letter that says they're going to give us three hundred and fifty-dollar credits because they're going to raise our rent, because they plan on fixing the roads and fixing the water. The water's been messed up since I've been there, it's been messed up since all these people for a long time. And a couple of years ago, they said they were going to see about hooking up the city water, and nothing came of that. And now this is their plan. My question is, how legal is this? You're going to give us three hundred and fifty dollars credits. Now, this credit can go on for eighteen months or longer, according to their letter. But I researched this whole thing, and this is really a scandalous deal on the part of that company, Harmony Communities, to get more investors into their company to pay for these things that they want to do. Fix the roads. Road's pretty good. Couple of potholes here and there towards the end of the road, but basically pretty good. The water's always been a problem the last several years, so... To me, it sounds like you're lying to the investors. You're telling them, oh, this is, this is how much money we're taking in because these people are paying a thousand dollars a month. And in fact, they're not. Our rents are pretty good right now. But when that goes up, most of us are on fixed incomes. You know, that's the reason I moved up here. I was living in Santa Rosa, couldn't afford to live there anymore. Moved up here, brought them over home. In Meadow. And uncomfortable. And then I get this letter, and I'm trying to figure out how the heck I'm going to get around this. And I'm eighty-one years old, never been homeless in my life, worked my ass off all my life, and here I am at a point where they might kick me, I'll be out on Highway Twenty with my car, and that's it. And this community is going to kick out all of these people. They're not even going to get afforded...
We're going to have to wrap up. Your three minutes is up.
All right. I just wanted to finish up, but they're not even going to be able to afford the rent, period, and away to life. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up.
I also live in the Upper Lake Park. My name is Tina Fauch. I don't know if the board has a copy of the letter that we received, but it contradicts itself. I spoke to the onsite manager. I found this out from someone else who posted it on Facebook before I got the letter. And the onsite manager told me, I said, how much out of pocket? Because the letter is really deceiving, and it says three hundred and fifty, and then it says it's going to go into an account, which if you play your cards right, is what they're saying, you may get part of it back. Well, a lot of us are seniors, and we may not be around for four or five years to get fifty dollars of the three hundred and fifty back that they're going to put aside supposedly for us. And the onsite manager also told me last week, there are more children going to school that live in there than have in the last ten years. So you do have a lot of children. It's not just old people, there are children there that are going to lose their homes. So, and then the back of the, if you guys want a copy of the letter, I'd love to give it to you. The back of the letter, after it says there's not going to be any change, this distinctly says nine hundred and fifty is what we're paying, we're paying six hundred now, and they just raised it in March. So even the onsite manager said, oh, it's just going to a credit account. I don't trust a credit account of money. I'm sixty-three years old. I don't know how long I'm going to be around, or my husband, or these other folks, or what. Those children might need that money, that three hundred and fifty dollars extra that's just sitting in somebody's account. So please, I pray that you will help us out with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up.
I live at Meadow Point, too. My name is Lindsay Silva, and I'm a stay-at-home mom. I have two kids, and my husband works, and it really will affect us a lot. Like, we live very frugally right now, but in a couple of months, it's going to be even more, more stressful for us as a family. So, I mean, there's a lot of children there, not just my kids, there's other families. Just wanted to put that out. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment in the chambers? Any on Zoom? iPad? If you can state your name for the record and unmute, we'll start your three minutes.
Hello. Yeah, my name is Richard Durham. And I'm, actually, I'm a cannabis license holder in Lake County, and I just had my yearly inspection, everything went well, it was very pleasant. But realizing that this is my sixth-year inspection, and I'm looking at a major use permit that is limited to ten years. And I have a lot of money invested in my venture here, and realizing that I'm looking at a closed order. And there was, I'm just saying that most major use permits run for the life of the property or the business, not to a ten-year period. And I'm asking the board supervisors to, ask the tax bands to change that and make it a permanent, instead of a ten-year period, it should run with the business or the land. And that's about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sterling, if you can unmute.
Good morning. Can you hear me, board?
Yes.
All right, so I am back again to talk about Spring Valley. I one-hundred percent agree with the gentleman earlier. I mean, what's it going to take, the death of over a thousand people in Spring Valley to get that bridge put in over Old Long Valley? I understand that you guys think that it's passable during the summertime, but it is not passable. The gentleman that actually lives at that property has dug a trench through the center of that creek a couple of years ago to prevent people to go through his property. So if there was a fire to break out, we literally only have New Long Valley. A few years ago, we had to put a Bailey Bridge in because of a mudslide during the wintertime took out New Long Valley. We were advised that we could stay in for three days as they put in that Bailey Bridge, or you could leave your home for three days. Another example of why we need another bridge out here. And then also with the water, I'm going to go back to that with you guys. I did send you an email after last week's public comment. I showed you guys that water leak that has been leaking for five weeks straight on Wolf Creek. Nothing has been done. I've stated this a million times before. The infrastructure out here needs to be fixed. We have asbestos pipes that are leaking for five weeks, not being told what kind of contamination's in our water. With that kind of leak, I mean, there has to be contamination. And I'm begging this board to kind of stand up, and with all the facts that I've given you guys, you see in 2012, we were granted a one-point-eight, a one-point-eight-two-million-dollar grant. We are putting in a new well out here. It's going to put more pressure on these pipes that constantly break. We need to start looking into federal grants that can pay into fixing the water mains themselves so they do not break, and we don't have this kind of water loss. So I really hope you guys take it into consideration, and thank you.
Thank you. Any other public input? iPhone SE, if you could unmute, state your name for the record.
Hello, my name is Skylar Leywah, and I am a licensed cannabis farmer in Lake County, and I am proud to contribute to our local economy, to grow responsibility, and to follow the rules that are laid out by the state and the county. But today I speak not just for myself, but for every farmer and resident who has voices been silenced by fear. When the government speaks with a big stick, it is the people's duty to stand with water and life. These words remind us that the authority must be challenged when it threatens fairness in life. Over the past three and a half years, my farm has faced unfair scrutiny, financial pressure, and public embarrassment. Licensed threats, the inability to access to the cannabis equity grant, my business partner's social security number that has been disclosed has become part of our reality. And during public meetings, my voice was censored, my face was hidden from the camera while speaking, and in fact, I am now required to inform administration of the clothing that I wish to wear if I want to speak against the government itself. These actions do not incur an isolation. They span multiple departments from community development to the tax collector, and it shows in emails that I've obtained through public records showing that the director herself apologizing to the tax collector for the delays in taking my license away. And yet, no corrective action was taken against her. County Council has allowed this behavior to continue unchecked, leaving a clear appearance of coordination or inaction that harm farmers like me. We see the climate of fear that this has created. Local farms are hesitant to speak up because of what they've witnessed with me and my farm speaking out against that. Fairness that we have been treated has resulted in the retaliation. And when legitimate complaints that, like being told to go to the sheriff to reverse a background disqualification, go unanswered, and when employees publicly disclose private information, the trust in our county erodes. This has been over three and a half years. I have had police officers tell me to treat code enforcement staff like police officers. Yet, the county continues to tolerate misconduct, push out employees, and allow racial slurs in their county environment. When enforcement is unaccountable, the residents and the farmers can't trust the rules that are applied. And this goes out to every cannabis farmer out there. If you have had any issues with Maria G. Turner, I urge you to file a civil grand jury complaint against her. Muleha.
All right. Are there any other public comments?
No more.
All right. With that, I'll go ahead and close public input at this time. Thank you for staying on task, and we'll move on to six-point-two, Pet of the Week. Do we have a Pet of the Week this week, or, it doesn't look like we do? All right, so we will, we'll move on forward to six-point-three. I'm going to cover six-point-three and six-point-four. I'm going to read them both, and then we will allow a public comment for both as well during the timeframe. So six-point-three, our nine-to-five, Presentation of Proclamation, declaring September twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-five is Native American Day in Lake County. I'm also going to read six-point-four, Presentation of Proclamation, declaring the second Monday in October is Indigenous Peoples' Day in Lake County. If you're here for this proclamation, I'm going to come read it, and come join me, please.
Blonde moment, forgot to...
Come on up. I also have a proclamation for each tribe in Lake County. So we'll do this one first.
I wasn't sure if this was...
All right. So we're going to start out with the September twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-five, California Native American Day in Lake County. I'm going to give you a little, that is, that is the actual Native American Day. A lot of the tribes already had their California Indian Day celebrations, their big times. This Friday at the Capitol, there's going to be another gathering at the state Capitol for everyone to share on that day as well. And that's what this proclamation actually accentuates. So I'll go ahead and read this one first. Proclamation declaring September twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-five is California Native American Day in Lake County. Whereas, Lake County has been home to people for greater than twelve thousand years and richly diverse cultures of the seven tribal nation indigenous to Lake County. Mittletown Rancheria of Pomo Indians, Coi Nation of Northern California, Big Valley Band of Pomo Indians, Scotts Valley Band of Pomo Indians, Habe Matelal Pomo of Upper Lake, Robinson Rancheria of Pomo Indians, of California, and Elam Indian Colony. They've all have enriched every aspect of our community's history. And whereas, Native Americans have helped to make our community stronger and more prosperous. And whereas, we celebrate the richness of the county's unique tribal history, traditions, achievements, and the impact Native American cultures have had upon every American. And whereas, Lake County is committed to protecting the sovereign right of Native American tribal organizations and institutions to strengthen their own communities. And whereas, in observance of California Native American Day, the County of Lake encourages all citizens to join in recognizing the many enduring contributions Native Americans have made to our state and county and commits to carrying forward the legacy of strength and sovereignty demonstrated by tribal leadership in our county's past, present, and future. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Lake County Board of Supervisors declares Friday, September twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-five, California Native American Day in Lake County, passed and adopted this twenty-third day of September twenty-twenty-five, signed by myself, Chair of the Board of Supervisors. If there's anyone that would like to comment on this specific document, by all means, or you can allow the other one to be read, and we can move forward from there. Is there anyone that would like to do that? All right, we'll go on to the next one. Thank you. You would like to talk about the...
This is my birthday. That's all I say. Hey, I love it. I grew up in...
That's all I say. Hey, I, I love it. I'm, I grew up in the Bay Area. Of all heritage, my wife is back Portuguese, so. Um, but, hey, first ones here. I, oh, I love the heritage. It's wonderful. And it's my birthday to have this kind of thing happen, um, for y'all. Y'all, I appreciate it, and I love it, and I love seeing America be this way with everybody. It's, it's great to have all the nationalities and the ones who are originators and stuff like that. I just appreciate all y'all. Appreciate you.
We get to share that day with you. All right. This next, uh, proclamation is declaring the second Monday in October, Indigenous Peoples' Day in Lake County. As you know, I wanna say in September, uh, twenty nineteen, myself and, uh, Moak Simon had brought this forward. Uh, it used to be called Columbus Day. Uh, as we know, that's basically a fallacy. We know that that, uh, he never actually reached the United States, so us calling that day Columbus Day is kind of, uh, doesn't make sense. So we're honored that, uh, the federal government decided to, uh, declare it Indigenous Peoples' Day. So I'll go ahead and read this. Uh, whereas, the area now known as Lake County has been home to people for greater than twelve thousand years in richly diverse cultures of seven tribal nations indigenous, indigenous to Lake County. Middletown Rancheria Pomo Indians of California, Coy Nation of Northern California, Big Valley Band of Pomo Indians, Scotts Valley Band of Pomo Indians, Habe Matelal Pomo of Upper Lake. Let's see, okay, Robinson Rancheria of Pomo Indians of California, and Elam Indian Colony have informed every aspect of our community's history. And whereas, policies and practices of the United States and earlier, earlier colonial governments deprived indigenous people in the state of California and Lake County specifically of land holdings, liberty, even life itself. Whereas, the County of Lake is committed to protecting rights of tribal organizations and institutions to strengthen their own communities as well as recognizing and celebrating achievements in areas such as governance, environmental stewardship, agriculture, and the arts. And whereas, Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed to the United Nations more than forty years ago and is now celebrated in many states, counties, cities, and school systems across the United States. Whereas, in June, sorry, in January twenty nineteen, Lake County proudly became the first United States county with two concurrent seated American Indian supervisors, Moak Simon and EJ Crandall. And whereas, because of our historic position, we have a responsibility to lead in honoring and celebrating the legacy of all America's indigenous peoples, their histories and cultures, and particularly those indigenous to Lake County. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Lake County Board of Supervisors declares the second Monday in October, Indigenous Peoples' Day in Lake County. Passed and adopted this twenty third day of September twenty twenty five. Signed by myself, Eddie Crandall, Chair of Board of Supervisors. All right. Thank you, everyone. And I just have to say, this second one was conducted because a lot of the leaders, uh, during that week are going to be, the week before, uh, Indigenous Peoples' Day, are going to be at different, uh, events that have to do with tribal governance. And so if we conducted that, we would probably have, like, two, two people probably here. Uh, so, uh, we, we decided to do this a little earlier and, uh, ensure that everyone was able to come forward and be part of this proclamation. Um, glad that all the leaders got to come today, and I'll go ahead and open it up for any tribal leader that would like to speak about these, these proclamations.
As always, thank you, Ron. This is tribal elder for telling me to go. Um, happy birthday. Thank you very much for those words. So obviously, Lake County Board of Supervisors, admin staff, everybody, thank you very much for this honor today. Uh, being here, I think, is just very important, uh, for all of us to show up and say thank you very much. So, EJ, thank you for reading this and presenting both these, and proud to have these things continue. So, once again, thank you very much. Lake County will be well represented at the Capitol on Friday. I myself will be there, and I know many other leaders will be carrying our flags to honor Lake County uh, in this manner. So thank you very much for today. And I wanted to thank everybody who did come out to our big times and our celebrations throughout the county. I know it was very busy this weekend, but it's for us to share our culture and to show who we are with the community, but also to bring you out and just let you know that, um, we really appreciate the camaraderie that we get, the, um, patronage to our businesses, and we just wanna say thank you. So, from the Middletown Rancheria, thank you very much. Thank you to Lake County Board of Supervisors. Oh.
All right.
Yeah, I just also wanna echo that, um, the thank you. I just appreciate it so much, and on behalf of Scotts Valley, you know, it's really important, um, to be acknowledged as the First Nations, um, tribe, as First Nations people, and we're just so thankful that, um, this is becoming the norm. It needs to be the norm, that we are acknowledged, um, in the place that we, we were here for time, since time immemorial. So I really wanna thank you, and, um, yeah, we just had our big time, and it was beautiful, and a lot of people came out, and we are always just welcoming people to come out to our celebrations, so, yes, and happy birthday.
You and I make or the, uh, work, actually, Ron Montez. Bucheke, Chabenepo. My name is Ron Montez. I'm an elder from Big Valley Band of Pomo Indians. They call them Chabenepo. It means rock people, rock village. And it is an honor for me to be here as well as these other leaders. I look out and I see hope. Uh, there's been a struggle in this community for many, many years just to have a voice or sit near to a table that would make some difference for our people. Now we're at the table with suggestions and ideas, and it is inspiring to all of our native people to see. But you also inspire us older ones because we know that in good hands, the fight that our ancestors left for us, and my time, I'm leaving for the rest of you to carry on and to take our, uh, culture, which is so rich. It is so full that, uh, there's so many, uh, discoveries that they're finding out now that our native people have been doing for many, many years, which have benefited in health, in, um, in prosperity, our monetary systems, our educational systems, our community systems, our care for our youth and for our elders. All of those are, uh, remarkable in itself, but now people are starting to gather some of that ecological, uh, ecological knowledge, EK they call it, uh, that we have been practicing, not knowing it. I tell the story, I can go to my aunt's house and have dinner, and if I do something wrong, she'll whip me. If I go back to my house, my mom finds out, she'll whip me too. That's how it was, and on our res, that's our community. That's how we care for each other. We looked out for each other. We would, only one car on a reservation, we'd all hop in it and go to the store. Or we'd go to the doctor. We took care of each other. Those were our principles being raised. And respect, you do not talk back to your mom, dad, aunts, uncles, or anybody because that was not, um, respectful. So we taught us to respect our elders and have that respect for the, ours who watch over us. And so I thank the Lake County Board of Supervisors and working with many of you from different times. I appreciate you welcoming me into your, uh, areas of sphere of influence and so on. And, uh, I appreciate this time, and I celebrate with all the rest of my sisters and brothers and aunties and uncles here. Oh.
All right. Uh, any other comments, uh, from the public? Come on up.
Good morning, and thank you. Thank you especially Elder Montez for sharing, uh, the message of culture, hope, and we appreciate that. And this should be a celebration, not just for one day, one week, one month. Um, the celebration last Friday at the gallery, the reopening of the Pomo Gallery was fabulous. At the museum, the museum court, the courthouse museum. And I encourage everyone to go visit. It's a lovely exhibit, not only in terms of curatorship, but especially because of curatorship, because the explanations are by the words of the people who lived it. And we're talking about community, and thank you so much for teaching us about community.
Yes, I want to, uh, recognize and thank our Native American communities, our tribes in Lake County for their contributions here thousands of years ago, all the way up to today. Um, I thank you for opening your big times to the public. I've been fortunate to go to some of those over the last, uh, few years, and it's, it's amazing to, uh, see those, those events. So I really appreciate having the opportunity to go. Thank the, uh, the tribal advisory, uh, committee that's done all the work to make sure that that, uh, Pomo Gallery was opened up this month and available to the public. Um, and also recognize their work on the, the Pomo family statue that's, that's gonna be coming hopefully by the, the end of this year, the first of next year. So thank you very much for your contributions.
It's, um, it, it really is an honor to have tribal leadership here with us today and to recognize, um, the relationships that we have with each other and how we've really been investing in each other. And, um, I, you know, I, one of the most significant things for me since sitting on this board is having a chance to work with, um, so many of you and Chairman Simon and my colleague, the Chair. Um, and, and the amount of learning that has happened over the years because we are together and because we're sitting at the table and listening to each other. Um, we have this region to co-manage together moving forward, and it's really going to take all of us, um, working together to, um, to look out for all of the people that live here and the environment as it is changing around us. And so we really need to, um, continue to lean on our relationships and invest in each other. So thank you so much for being here today and for showing up, um, continually. I really appreciate it.
Anytime we get to celebrate diversity is a good day. Um, I think there's so much more to learn than just what we see within our own lives and our own experiences. And, uh, having these moments, uh, I, I cherish these moments. Uh, I think that unfortunately, we have these moments because of the past, that we have to, uh, talk about these things, that we have to celebrate, we have to honor these things, um, because the future is all of us together. Uh, the past may have had some separations and some real bad history, and it's okay to talk about that, uh, as long as we're moving forward and making progress, and tomorrow is together and not going backwards. Um, it is unfortunate that some of the rhetoric that we're hearing is trying to reverse some of those conversations. Uh, but I think all of us together are gonna have much better opportunities to solve the problems that we all face together, um, rather than try to think that any one of us has all the answers to solve the problems. And so, uh, increasing and opening our minds to everybody in our community and not trying to exclude folks like we have in the past, I think is just the opportunity we need to keep pushing forward and appreciate these moments. So thank you all for being here, and thank you, Chair Crandall, for continuing to bring these.
You know, uh, growing up here, I, uh, really, we were all raised as one. I felt that we were, there was not the, uh, I thought we were kind of protected here in Lake County from a lot of the, um, what would you call it, racisms and, and that type of stuff, stigmas, yes. I just, we were just raised that we were all one. We went to, we all went to school together. Um, I've learned a lot since I've been on the board. I'm still learning. I still have a lot to learn. Um, I know that I tried to stop by the, the museum to see the, the, um, culture over here at this museum. Actually, Mr. Bruno and I tried to stop by there last week, and, and I'm gonna have to go by there. It was closed on the day I went by. Um, I'm really excited about the statue coming forward. Um, but it was, it's always been something that I admired, the, the native culture and the native lands, the, a lot of the, um, stuff that's brought forward. You know, there, there was that old song, um, back when I was a kid, when I was about a senior in high school. Um, the cowboys dressing up like Indians and the Indians dressing up like cowboys. Um, so there was just so much that we had in common, and I appreciated. And even now, some of my favorite jewelry and stuff reflects that. So, uh, I wanna thank you for your culture and what you're bringing forward.
I thought of something just real quick bef- uh, when, when we were talking, um, there was a, so, they know us as Pomo Indians, and, and, and Elder Montez had mentioned Chabenepo, and that's what the people called, they called themselves. That was Chabenepo Gaok. And so we had our own names that we called ourselves. In my tribe, it was Danoha Gaok or Shigum Gaok. Um, and so Pomo, po is this shell right here, which is basically money. And so, um, mo is a cavern or a little, it's a little like stove that you make in the ground that bakes that cavern. And so we had a monetary system here, and there's a lot of history that says, well, uh, like my great-great-great-grandfather at Blue Lakes, they say he gave away that land for shells. Well, when I went to Iraq, they changed the dinar. The, the dinar had Saddam Hussein's face on it, and then when we got there, it changed to one without it, and that was no longer valuable. So our people thought this was still valued. And so when they traded it, they were like, oh, we're good. But little did they know, the other, you know, the other form of currency changed. So that's another thing I wanna help people realize because when you think of, people think of it like, oh, they just traded it for shells. Well, think of that concept. And so, um, so, yeah, so I guess the people that, when they came and realized who we were and said, you know, what are, what, what are they? What do they call themselves? Said, well, they must be Pomo. Well, they must have heard everyone talking about making money. So they decided to call us that. So I figured that that's, I would tell that story to educate and, and give some, uh, insight to that. So, uh, thank you, everybody, for coming. Thank you for making comments. And I think if there's nothing else, we'll go ahead and, uh, let Sam take the picture.
Hey, Moak, who, Moak? Who are we playing for homecoming?
Will.
Willets, thank you.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
All right.
All right. We'll take a quick break. We'll take a quick break.
Okay.
We'll be back at 10:00. I know we're a little behind. All right.
That was nice.
Yeah, thank you for the work.
It makes up for the loss of the panel.
Bringing in an old country song.
Yeah, there you go.
Go.
All right, we're ready. All right, welcome back from the break. We're going to start back here on our next item, which is 6.5. UC California Extension.
Cooperative.
Cooperative Extension, sorry. Water and Climate Advisory Program update. Dr. Laura Garza Diaz. Matthew Barnes, go ahead and lead us off.
Good morning, and thank you Chair Crandall. Thank you Board for having us. Matthew Barnes, Area Director, UC Cooperative Extension. Here today to introduce Dr. Laura Garza Diaz, Area Water Resources Management Advisor for Mendocino and Lake County, specializing in water policy and management. Dr. Garza Diaz earned a BS degree in Biotechnology Engineering from Tech de Monterey, Mexico, followed by a master's dual degree in Applied Ecology from Kiel University in Germany and Poitiers University in France, where she focused on environmental science and field research. She went on to work with water, at the Water Research Center for Latin America and the Caribbean before moving to the United States to pursue doctoral studies. At UC Davis, she completed a PhD in Hydrologic Sciences, specializing in water policy and management. Her professional career includes research and applied, includes research and applied work across North and Latin America, from sustainable agriculture in Paro Valley, California, to social ecological resilience and in-stream flows in the Rio Grande and Rio Bravo Basin, to working with water rights and watershed restoration projects in Washington State. Fluent in both English and Spanish, she's committed to building science, policy, and community engagement, ensuring that water and climate solutions are both scientifically sound and socially equitable. In the two-plus years she's been with Cooperative Extension, her community outreach and research has far exceeded university standards. Her ongoing drought resilience assessment with Middletown Rancheria is a benchmark for the University of California as one of the first co-created projects weaving indigenous and Western science. It is my pleasure to introduce Dr. Laura Garza Diaz.
That was an introduction. Hello, everyone. Good morning, supervisors and community members. Again, my name is Laura Garza. I'm the Area Water Resources Management Advisor for UC Cooperative Extension. And today I would like to share an overview of the UCC E Lake Water and Climate Change Program. Just starting with the mission of this program, which is to provide research-based guidance, education, and technical support to community members, water users, and different stakeholders in Lake County. This program focuses on sustainable water management, in which I hope to help people to adapt to climate variability and foster collaboration, or fostering collaboration to protect water resources for the current and future generations. This program works with, at the intersection between three main pillars, which is water quantity, water quality, and climate change. This approach helps us to look at water challenges in a more holistic way to make sure that management decisions are addressed, not only for water supply, but also water demand, water quality, and long-term climate change resilience. This work spans through four different geographic skills efforts. At the local effort, I work directly with farmers, with tribes, and with smaller community, smaller communities. I also work with the GSAs. At the countywide level, I collaborate with Lake County Departments, which is the Water Resources Department here in Lake County and other groundwater sustainability agencies, including Big Valley GSA. For the regional scale, I look for, or I support projects that are within watersheds that are shared between different counties. For instance, we have the Cache Creek watershed that is shared between Lake County and Yolo County, or the, probably you already, everyone knows about, the Eel River watershed, which is shared between Lake County, Mendocino, Humboldt. And at the same time, that watershed, because of the different, or because of the water management strategy of Potter Valley, it also affects some other counties, which is Sonoma County and Marin County as well. And then, if you can go back. And the last geographic scale effort is statewide level, in which this program aligns with broader California initiatives and programs, in which we ensure that the local voices of Lake County and Mendocino County are represented in statewide efforts. Now I'll showcase some of the different activities at the specific geographic scales. So at the local level, I've engaged through educational events and farm visits. For educational events, some examples include small farmers' conferences, on-farm irrigation workshops, drought strategies, events for agriculture, in which I aim to provide resources and connect directly with growers and farmers, as long as, as well as community members with science-based practices that support water efficiency and sustainable water resources management. For farm visits, I support farmers and ranchers on water resources challenges that they might have, including irrigation scheduling or on-farm water budgets, among other practices. For instance, the picture in the middle is one that I really, really like. This is one of my, a really, a really great, two farmers. They're Jills Organic Farm, and they're wonderful farmers who rely a lot on UCC E support. We norm, myself, along with other UCC advisors, we will normally send them grants and different resources that they can use to support their on-farm activities. Next. Also, a core priority of this program in the local level is working with tribal nations. Historically, UCC would focus mostly on farm, on farmers and ranchers. But now that we know the importance of working with tribal nations, this is one of the core priorities of this program. For example, and Matthew already said it, I collaborated with Middletown Rancheria to develop a water and climate change needs assessment to support their needs. We did this by working together with Middletown. We applied for this proposal to the Institute for Tribal Environmental Professionals in order to fund a tribal student for 10 weeks during the summer. The student came from the Pasquayaki Tribe from Arizona, and she was able to develop this needs assessment in collaboration with community members from Middletown. This was, of course, a wonderful experience for her and for me as well, because this, she was able to develop this needs assessment, but at the same time, she was allowed to work for a California tribe. She was able to meet other tribes as well, and she was able to go to different tribal events, for example, the Tulie Boat Festival. Also, we supported Scotts Valley Tribe by hosting a tribal youth day, which was focused on bringing youth to the natural resources education within the University of California. So we developed this two-day event. This took place in our UC Hopland Research and Education Center, where we aim to introduce all of the different university research and different professional programs within UC to the Scots Valley youth. I must say that this was a really, truly a two-way learning event. The youth were able to learn from different professionals' paths through UC advisors, right? But also, I think UC advisors were able to learn about traditional ecological knowledge of California natural resources from tribal members, which are, you know, the original scientists of the land. Next one. Then, moving into a bigger scale, looking at countywide activities. I support, again, agencies like the Lake County Water Resources Department. I work a lot with Pa'wan, and which, who is the director of the Water Department. And also, I've been attending to some of the Big Valley Groundwater Sustainable Agency meetings. I just started working with the Lake County Water Resources Department and STANTEC to develop the Lake County Drought Resilience Plan. Here are just some examples of some educational material that I did for Mendocino County. And I aim to do all of this for Lake County as soon as we have the drought resilience plan ready. These resources are aimed for domestic well owners and state small water suppliers. And then, as I mentioned, I've been attending to the Big Valley GSA or Groundwater Sustainability Agency to look at, or first of all, to get familiarized with the area, but also to provide any technical support, technical expertise, and of course, educational outreach efforts in their projects related to SIGMA or the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. Next one. At the regional scale, I'm leading a research project focused on the hydrologic, environmental, and climatic and social resilience of the effects of removing Scott Dam. This project aims to develop sort of like a, like an interface for community members to, for them to see in a really clear way what would happen, or what are the effects and benefits of doing this. This project was funded by the California Institute of Water Resources and the USGS, and this will support also graduate students from UC Davis to develop this project. And then at the statewide level, this program contributes to two major initiatives. The first one is that I'm co-developing this California Water Course, which is a bilingual training program for early-career water professionals and community advocates. We just started this in August. We were supposed to open this course for only 25 students, but people were really excited about this, so we have welcomed over 60 students. This is based in UC Davis, but hopefully in the future, we could have a chapter here in Northern California, in Lake County and Mendocino County. And then, I've been also working with the WELL Program, which is the water education for elected Latino leaders, which then it transforms into doing water education for BIPOC community leaders. This builds capacity among local elected officials to engage in anything related to water policy, from hydrology 101 to water rights to water policy aspects, so that they could have a more, a better decision-making when they're doing their efforts in their professional work. So those are some of the activities that we've done. Next one. As you were able to see, this program spans many different levels of work, from doing farm visits to educational events, to working directly with Lake County, to doing some state work. And so if you want to learn more about this UCC Water and Climate Change Program, feel free to go into this website. It's still, I'm still building it, so there's still a lot of work to do there. But if you are really interested in some material, you're probably going to find it there. And if not, you can also always reach out to me. That's it for today. I have my email there. And also, you can just look at the program, and if you have any questions, happy to ask, happy to respond.
Questions from the Board? Open it up to the public briefly to see if there's anyone that would like to comment on this presentation.
Dr. Garza Diaz, thank you so much for your presentation. Good morning, Dr. Barnes, good to see you. It's absolutely inspiring, the work that you're, you're doing. Thank you. Water is one of our most precious resources, and it's been undervalued and neglected for so long. So I look forward, as a citizen, to work with you and to preserve our groundwater management. And I am very excited to learn about the California Water Course that you are working on, and the Water Lab, it's fabulous. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
All right. Any other? Sterling, if you'd like to unmute.
All right, thank you. I was listening to your presentation, and I just have a few questions. Well, if you're going to be working in Lake County, and you stated that you'll be doing a statewide for small, small districts. I live in a small district of 409 active customers. I'm not sure if you'd be able to work with the Special Districts Board, with our water loss system and all that. I may misunderstood your presentation, but also would like to know if that is something that you'll be moving into the county and helping with on major water losses, because six months straight, we lost around 63% of our treated water. We have numerous water breaks, asbestos water pipes, so these are some concerns, and seeing your presentation and wondering if that could help small communities in Lake County. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your comment. I can definitely support the smaller special water districts in different projects. I, I'm trained to write grants as well, so if we can find some project related to, for instance, the asbestos in the water pipes, I can try to find some funding and then develop a project to, to support the water districts. I can leave out my email, so that you can send me an email directly, and then we can just talk and figure out if we can develop a project together, or if, if you need any extra support that I can provide, I'll be happy to do so.
All right. There, let me close this, if there's no one else. Is there anyone else on Zoom? Ma'am, come on up, and then I'll open it up.
Thank you very, very much. I only have two questions, I'm not sure if they're appropriate, but I live in Nice, and a large part of that community on that side of Highway 20 does not have water. And I was wondering, and also, I met a student that just graduated, he's 16, and there's no programs for him, and you were talking about programs for the youth. And I'm wondering, are you going to have programs that the children here in this county, all children in community, in schools can participate in a learning about the water and the environment? One, is there a program for the children here? Two, is there a program where people on that side of the highway could get water, you know, even if it was like, you know, some program to help them get water? Is that an appropriate question?
So if you, can you finish, so that there's not a back and forth? Once you're finished, yes, are you finished, or do you have more?
Finished.
Okay, thank you. And then, go ahead, you can go ahead and answer that briefly.
Yeah, so for the first part, where you mentioned there's a community without water, I can definitely go and, and look at the area and see what are the main problems. I, I can't, I mean, I can't, you know, bring water, right? Because that's, that's a whole new level, but I can definitely go and make an assessment, and then we can, you know, you know, write something, so that your community members can come and, and ask for that. I can definitely help you with that. And, and related to the program for the youth, if there's a need, I can, outreach is one of the main things that we do in, as UC advisors. And so, if, if there's a need to develop a program for youth, or for kids to learn more about water in general, water quality and all of that, that's something that I could definitely do.
Oh, great.
And you guys can follow up after then, that sounds good. Thank you very much. Is there any other public comment? I'm going to close public comment, and I know that you had, you had something, and I know Supervisor is about to hit something.
Yes. I hadn't seen your classes before, you know, what's in your material. Are you going to be offering something along those lines on a yearly basis? Will it be offered again, those classes? Because I, I know you've got one left, which is basically the graduation.
Well, we just started this program this year, it was sort of like our pilot program. We are aiming to have this every single year. And, and as I was mentioning, this was for the whole state of California, so we, we see a lot of different, you know, case studies in the Central Valley, in South California, and all of that. So my goal is that in the near future, maybe next year, or the following year, is to have one chapter for Lake County and Mendocino County, so that we can just look specifically at water challenges that are happening in our region.
Okay. And so you will probably be having something, is it in this area where you hold it then, or would you be holding it in Sacramento?
No, it will be here. I mean, if we do a chapter in Lake County and Mendocino County, it would be, it would be in this area.
Thank you.
Supervisor is about to, yeah. All right, well, thank you for this presentation. If there's no other questions or comments, we appreciate it, and we'll look forward to what holds, what the future holds. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Move on to our next item, our 6.6 hearing, consideration of request for hearing regarding code enforcement abatement activity at 6782 and 6792, Marin Street, Nice, APNs 03117338 and 41. Property owner and appellant, Jessica Northcutt, Community Development Director, Maria Turner, and Code Enforcement Manager, Marcus Beltramo. And I think if the, if there are people here, then we're going to have to swear people in and whatnot, so we'll go ahead and start it on that. I think we're good. Usually, they, they just stay down. Yeah.
If you're here to speak and give testimony on this item, can you please stand up and raise your right hand? And if you're on Zoom, raise your hand in Zoom. And I don't see anybody in Zoom, so with your right hand raised, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Do those individuals need to stand up when they did that, or?
Yeah.
Row right there, the lady and the gentleman with the glasses.
You guys raised your hand, right? Okay, you're right.
All right.
Thank you, Maria Turner, Community Development Director. Turning this over to Code Enforcement Manager.
Just so, they're going to go through their presentation, and then we'll give you the opportunity to talk after they're finished.
For this one, there was discussion yesterday about requesting a continuance. We did not realize that the property owner was going to attend today, or, from the communications, we thought she was going to be absent. However, since she's here today, given the urgency of this situation, as Marcus will describe, we'd like to move forward today. So we are not recommending a continuance.
Okay. And so, real quick, are you still recommending a continuance, or since you're here, we're good to go?
Good to go.
Okay, excellent. Continue.
My name is Marcus Beltramo, I'm the manager of the Code Enforcement Division for the County of Lake. I did discuss the extension or moving forward here today with Ms. Northcutt, and they chose to move forward here today. Normally, we'd have a PowerPoint for you, but I believe you have the documents, you have the photos, you have the memo, so you have the information pertinent or material to this situation. So I'll, that being said, I'll move forward. So, Code Enforcement issued notices, an order to abate and a notice of violation. This hearing today is for the order to abate. The property is, initially, they filed a request for a hearing for, I believe, 6782, but there are two properties involved here, and both properties have violations on them. So I discussed with Ms. Northcutt, and it was her intention to, for lack of a better term, appeal our notices for both properties. So we issued notices for both properties. One property, the main property, is, which is the, which is our most, our main concern, or our priority concern, is the property that incurred fire damage, and I believe that's 6782. And on that property, they had a, the fire, the structure there incurred a fire. There was a fire, the structure was burnt to the ground, I believe it burned the neighbor's property too. We issued a, we talked to the, the property owner, Ms. Northcutt, told her that she had to get a demolition, demolition permit, and she had to remove all the fire debris and everything from that property. She did come in, she obtained a building permit, a demolition permit, to remove all the debris from the property. That was approximately more than a year ago. Demolition permits are good for one year, that permit was expiring. When it got to the point where it was about to expire, based on the progress they had made, which in my opinion was minimal, or not sufficient enough or adequate enough to address the fire debris, we issued a notice, an order to abate, and a notice of violation, so that when the building permit did expire, we were in a position to move forward. Ms. Northcutt then filed a request for a hearing, and that's why we're here today. Our real concern is with the fire debris on the property, that when the, we're getting into our, our, our winter seasons, our fall seasons, where there's a lot more rain, and our concern is that when the rain does rain on that property, that it will get, capture all that debris and then wash it down, eventually going into our tributaries and streams, and then ultimately, the lake. And that's our concern, and that's why Code Enforcement feels that inaction is warranted to move forward and to clear the property of, of this debris and all remaining other issues on that property. The second property just has miscellaneous items that are on there, the property is Zoned R1, it doesn't have a primary structure on there, so therefore, no storage can occur, storage is a secondary or accessory use. So all those items stored on that property are stored in violation or contrary to the Lake County zoning ordinance and the zoning designation for that property. We did work with the property owner, she did come in on several occasions to discuss building permits and how to build on that property, so we did work with them in that capacity. But ultimately, our main concern is the fact that that property that incurred the fire, that all that debris is removed. That debris is, is a safety and a health concern for that property and the surrounding community. Over the past year or so, we've also been dealing with a lot of issues occurring on that property. People were living in RVs and trailers on that property in violation of our ordinances. Blocking the roadway, blocking waste management services, a lot of calls for the sheriff's office. So it is also our hope through that this abatement, that not only will we solve the health and safety issues on that property, also enforce compliance with the Lake County zoning ordinance for the other property, that some of these ancillary issues that are also being caused will also be resolved. Environmental health was also incurring a lot of calls for service to deal with some of the issues occurring on this property. So Code Enforcement is requesting that the, the board uphold our notice and allow us to move forward with the abatement process and to clear all the violations from this property. That being said, that concludes my presentation, and I'll turn it back over to the board.
Director Turner, anything to add? All right. With that, I will go ahead and give you the opportunity to make your statement to the board.
Well, this is our-
Can you speak into the microphone to state your name?
My name's Dan Hanna, and I'm Jessica Northcutt's partner, and I don't know, about a year ago, our house burnt down, it was 12 minutes, and we lost a friend in the fire, and it was a-
Precious dog.
And our precious dog, it was a pretty, it was a devastating calamity and a misfortune. And I think that's where a lot of the confusion's coming into play. We've been busting our butt, she and I, to clean this place up, and we got a permit, we got all of our stuff in order, and we started the process, and we're still in it, and we're still committed. But it kind of makes it, it's a little difficult to do anything when you're sitting in Hill Road facility for code enforcement violations, which she and I were both arrested twice on different matters, and some of those matters have been dismissed. We appeared on the other matters yesterday, and, well, we have another court date, which is never no fun. So we're just, all we want to do is rebuild our home, the exact home that was there, we don't want to change anything, and it's the cheapest way for us to go about it, and that's all we're trying to do. And the things that are on the property are, all is, is all we have left from this fire. There's, you know, the vehicles don't look real good, but it's what we got to start over with, to get started with. And there was some free dump days, I took a truck and a trailer, two trucks and trailers to three of those free dump days. But the stuff I have to get rid of, I have to have a soil sample done, to make sure there's no toxic debris or anything before I can remove the material. So that's a $600 soil sample at Alpha Analytical in Ukiah, which we're, basically, we were down to 25 days, and we were trying to wrap all this up, so we could move, move forward and get the demo signed off, start our building permit. So that's kind of where we kind of fell off the wagon there, because we, we became homeless. We've been homeless for 150 days, so we put in a request for a hearing, and we thought it would be 15 days, and we asked, we were asked if we want to expedite it, and we said yes. So it's like, 150 days went by, or more, and there was a stay-away order placed on us, and there's no record of it, I don't understand that, but, so we didn't want to go back to jail, so we stayed away. So we've been, we've been homeless, and the people here with us have been kind enough to put us up for a week or two at a time at their place, and we kind of just rotated, so we didn't wear our welcome. It's been really taxing on us and our dogs, and our place has been robbed and burglarized and vandalized on a daily basis. And there's been people in and out of there, we don't even have control over, you know? And I can't, I can be accountable for our address, where we live, but if somebody pulls a motorhome down the road and parks it on anybody's street, I mean, that doesn't make you, doesn't make it your responsibility or your fault, so I just wanted to, you know, make that clear. And of course, it's like my Native American brothers, they always try to help people, and I try to do the same. I've been here since 1980, I buried my folks two years ago, a year ago, and we're just trying to rebuild our life and get going here. We would like some support from our local code enforcement boys, instead of just putting a hammer down on us.
All right. Thank you for that. Did you have anything else to add, or?
Hi, good morning, my name is Jessica-
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
Good morning, my name is Jessica Northcutt, thank you for hearing me this morning. So, basically, what I'm requesting is, is help, you know? We don't have any resources. Apparently, the city is broke, and, and I know we need to get this done, but if we can just get any help, would be highly, you know, appreciated, and it's just been extremely hard. This hardship is, for me to feel like I belong anywhere at this point, you know? And when I moved here, I, I was hoping this would be my place of retirement, and it's a beautiful, beautiful county, beautiful city of Nice, and, you know, we're good citizens, we don't rob and steal, or, we just want to get back to our lives and clean up and, you know, be a part of the community, and not feel like we're pushed away, I feel like we've been, you know, pushed up against a wall, and it's just been extremely difficult. So if we could get any help, we'll, we'll take care of it, I mean.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you want to?
I, I don't think there's anything further, I-
Anyone else? All right. I'm going to open it up for this, you'll have-
Hello, my name's Elizabeth Jeremiahus, and I'm a neighbor and friend of Jessica and Dan, and I've watched them go through this whole process, and it seems really unfortunate that they've been so victimized and criminalized, basically, by code enforcement and Lake County Sheriff's Department. Dan Hanna was arrested on 11, the 11th day of the 30-day allowed by law on the nuisance complaint, the red tag that was placed on their property, and he was working on complying. But he's one man, he was trying to get help, and they came and arrested him, and Officer Lyons, who is an absolute problem for our- problem for our community, um, he has, I don't know, but anyways, I saw all this going on and then Jessica was later arrested. But it was the 11th day of the 30 day allowed by law that they had to comply with the nuisance complaint and the, to abate the property. He had already abated the first red tag. And he was in, in, in the process of, of abating the second when he was arrested. And then they were arrested again and they were jailed for five days when they, all they have done is been victim of fires for a five day over the, uh, 4th of July weekend. They were in there for five days. For what? For what? I mean, it's horrible, really. And they're, they're just trying to, you know, get, rebuild their lives, but they didn't have any resources. I've been helping them with their administrative work because, you know, they didn't really know how to go about things. And, um, so, you know, I mean, had Lake County approached them, code enforcement with, you know, resources, hey, this is how you go about it. This is what needs to be done. But they never did that. They came and just completely, you know, gave, you know, made, uh, you know, things, a, a really tragic situation worse, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So I'm gonna, if there's no one else, I'm gonna close that portion of it and, uh, come back to the board. Go ahead supervisor or High School was first, go ahead and then, uh,
Then him. I have, um, were they arrested because of the red tag?
So this is something the sheriff's office would have to comment out, but I believe the violation was they were continuing a public nuisance. They were, the people were staying in a recreational vehicle on the property for a red tag. Also, they were blocking the street with all these inoperable vehicles, uh, broke down recreational vehicles, trash, miscellaneous things that were blocking the street for emergency services and also for waste management services. And I'd just like to also comment, we did try to provide them resources. We provided them with the dump day. We tried to work with them. Um, we were very patient. Um, progress in my opinion was very slow. And, um, but we did try to work with them, but I, I, the, my understanding is the courts did issue a stay away order at some point because their presence seemed to, um, continue other issues that were affecting the community that could be classified as a nuisance under criminal law.
Okay. And the fire was in July of 2024?
That's my understanding.
June 9th.
June.
Ju- June of 2024. I think this abatement is the help that you need. This abatement process is going to clean your property and give you that fresh start. It's been a really long time. I know how hard it is to lose your home and lose everything, but, um, I think this is really going to be the way that will give you this fresh start. Clean your land. You're going to have to pay it back over time. Um, but as difficult as this is, I think this really is the best way forward. Your community is in a, is in a bad situation having this prolonged and we, we can't allow this to be prolonged any longer. This is a public safety issue for the people around you. And this is, is really difficult. Cleaning up and moving on after losing your home is really, really hard. Um, but I, I think that this really is the best way forward and we have to look out for the rest of the community and, um, and any other potential environmental damages that can happen.
Supervisor Sabatia?
I appreciate. Appreciate that, uh, I was going to ask about the stay order. Um, and so thank you for clarifying that at least to a certain degree. Um, just a brief question, um, just because there is something that I feel needs to be at least discussed and touched on. The letter of request for a hearing was on June 8th, 2025. Uh, we are September 23rd, 2025. Their home burned. We have to find a way to deal with the community issue as well as, uh, they need to deal with their personal situation. Uh, not sure if it's, uh, they're, they're under oath, so they're homeless at this moment is what they're saying. Why the timeframe between June 8th and September 23rd? What is required to bring to us? What more is needed in order to bring us a abatement, uh, hearing? Uh, I know there is a notification, uh, that has a 13 to 30 day window, whatever that actually is. Uh, but there's a certain timeframe for that. Uh, but do you have to gather more evidence or does your evidence already exist based on the case that's been built until there's a request for a hearing? I'm just kind of curious as to how can we help these individuals who, there's a lot of burnouts that occur in people's homes? How can we help them get to their final destination so that they don't have to be homeless for as long as that, that's possible? And I have another question after that.
I think if I understand your question correctly, it, you know, they, there was a fire. They're, they, they had no other.
If, if I may, the timeline between June 8th and September 20th, that's my question.
Yeah. So, um, we are a small office. We are a high volume office. Uh, we did our best to bring this to the board as, as fast as we could. Um, but there are daily operational issues and immediate issues and other issues that come into play that distract us from trying to get some of these things done in a, in a more timely manner. Obviously I would prefer to get it up, uh, to the board. Um, actually the extension of time benefited them because they had more time to clean and clear the property and kind of work on their situation, but, um, the code enforcement world in the county, at the county level is a very busy world. We're doing a lot of different things. We're still trying to upgrade our systems. So there's a lot going on and on top of that, there's weekly, um, issues that require immediate attention. So we're kind of pulled in a lot of different directions and not having all the staffing we need. Um, we've been doing better at that to be more organized and do these things in a timely manner, but I would just say, daily distractions, weekly distractions were the cause of us not being able to bring this, uh, in a, in a, in a sooner or more timely manner.
Well, you may not like my response. I think we need to do better. Uh, I, I think for folks who get burned out, it, people who have trash in front of their yards and they've created a situation for themselves, like that's one thing. For people who unfortunately endured a fire, I think we need to try to expedite some of these processes. Whether or not they're getting the job done as far as cleaning up. But I think we need to help expedite some of these things because there can be a trauma impact. There can be some other issue impacts that occurs from that. I don't know how that works, but to me that, that's, that's a long period of waiting after submitting a letter saying, I want a public hearing to wait another three months. Uh, and then some, almost four months after the fact. Uh, I'd love to see that be reduced if possible. Um, my other question is, are they not allowed to get a permit for a new home until the cleanup and demolition has been done? Or is it possible? Because I know that if you have a permit to build, you can also live, uh, temporarily uh, on the property while you're building. Is there a possibility of, uh, get a temporary building while you're also doing the demolition and building from a fire burnout?
We encountered this during Valley Fire and there were, uh, because of the proclamation of community emergency, there was a relaxation in the zoning code. Uh, but we did encounter difficulties even with allowing temporary residential use
Of course.
during the cleanup because you really have to avoid the area that has been contaminated. So we had to make sure that these temporary dwellings during the cleanup period were avoiding that. We have no such uh, relaxation due to community emergency on a day to day basis. And so, no, we do not issue, um, temporary dwelling permits while the cleanup is taking place.
Well, just, just again, I know it's outside of the, uh, conversation here, but dealing with the fact that somebody's house burns, most people don't have two homes that they can go to. Uh, they're going from couch to couch. Uh, I'd be willing to have a discussion on, is there a way to relax for somebody who's been burned out? Uh, and, and trying to figure out how to not increase our other problems outside of this. But again, that's a separate conversation.
Let's have that at a separate time so we can, we have a really big agenda.
If I could add on that, we, we did explore their finances and their financial ability to get a temporary dwelling permit and to build a house, put a house on the property. And they could never provide any information that we could rely on or assurances that they had the financial means. I think finances at the end of the day would have been their hang up to get a temporary dwelling permit and a building permit. And we did explore the option of a tiny home. They did come with friends and family and members of their family that claimed to have funds to go through that process to get them in a temporary dwelling situation.
Okay. Okay, I, uh, I'm a little disturbed at the fact, and I think you guys are doing an amazing job, okay? But I am a little disturbed at the fact that they were arrested during the time that they had to clean up. So that the red tag and doesn't allow them on the property and stay away, issued to stay away from the property prohibits them from cleaning up in all honesty. And I just don't think that we're really being fair if that be the case. However, in saying that, and I am one that lost my house in the Valley Fire. So I did have other people clean it up and it was worth it. There's no way we could have financially done it as cheap as having somebody else do it. And having the means to do it and, and it sounds to me like finances are a big factor in here. So having a place to, I would, again, I kind of like what, um, Mr. Bruno had brought up and I'd had that in my notes as well. A temporary dwelling, even if it was something like a, a motorhome. We can do that later, but what I'm saying is to work with people, um, in those situations, I think is something we do, we do need to take a look at to make it easier. But not being allowed on the property to clean up makes it impossible to clean up. And I don't know if you have the means to do the work yourself. It may behoove you to go ahead and have it cleaned. I don't know what the price tag would be to have it cleaned. And I don't know that you have the means to do it. So being able to, um, have it done for you and pay for it over time would be something I would, I would also think might, might make it easier.
All right. So, uh, do you want to finish?
I, I do. I'm, I'm not clear that we have accurate information that they were arrested during the correction period. Um, I think that needs, that's something that needs to be vetted out, um, obviously. Um, Deputy Lyons, in my experience and working with him in the Copter program, um, he's very experienced. He's very knowledgeable in public nuisances. I would, uh, in my experience, when we have a code enforcement order in place, they, they can, they understand that they cannot take an action within that period unless it meets an exemption or exception that they may have or an egregious type of issue. So I'm not clear that that actually occurred. I think we need to vet that out.
Okay. Thank you for that, Marcus.
With that, at this time, if there's nothing else, uh, we can either take action or this is in my district, so if someone wants to. Lloyd, please.
Mr. Chair, just a small, uh, correction just for as clean purposes because the board memo itself, itself makes reference to an address number of 6892. But I believe, uh, after, uh, Manager Bill Tramos, uh, representation or statements to your board, I believe that was meant to be 6782. That's all.
Mr. Chair, I move that we uphold the notice of nuisance and order to abate and instruct staff to move forward in its abatement process to remove all existing violations from the property addressed as amended.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries for one. With that, uh, that'll conclude this hearing and we're going to move on to our next hearing, which is our 6.7. Um, thank you for coming forward and, uh, apologize that it didn't go.
Thank you for your time.
See, with, I, we have to move on. You can talk with, uh, the staff after. 6.7, uh, consideration of request for hearing regarding code enforcement activity at 7180 Dodge Road, Nice, APN 032091-18. Property owner Diana Anglero. Uh, is there anyone here from this, uh, area or from this? Okay. Um, and so with that, we're going to have to have, uh, the folks sworn in who are here on behalf of this item. Yeah, you can stand up here.
If you're going to give testimony on this item, please stand and raise your right hand. If you're in Zoom, please raise your hand in Zoom. Okay, no hands in Zoom. All right. With your right hand raised, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
All right. So, uh, again, here we're, uh, an appeal, uh, request for a hearing in front of the board was made in regards to a notice of nuisance and an order to abate issued against this property. Property 7180 Dodge Road in East California. I would also like to make the board aware that we have, uh, two expert witnesses or two, one code enforcement officer witness and an expert witness. The expert witness is Jack Smalley, the chief building official for the county of Lake. And then Wes Nelson is the code enforcement officer. Uh, Wes specializes in substandard structures and unpermitted, uh, construction. He also is a licensed contractor as well. That being said, I'll begin with my presentation. Um, Dodge property is located in the Nice. We made a map here. We always like to get context so you know where the property is located in, uh, proximity to densely populated areas and lake and environment or other sensitive areas. Uh, the property owner is Diana Ang- Anglero. Um, I believe she's here today at the podium. The property is owned SR, is improved with an unpermitted structure. So, um, the structure that is existing there, I do want to reemphasize it's an unpermitted structure. We deemed it to be an unsafe structure. Um, later Wes Nelson, if the board requests, he can give you a description of the construction, how it was constructed and what, what issue, unsafe issues are present with the construction on the property. Uh, we issued two notices against the property. Posted those notices at the property. So she was served with all the proper notifications, letting her know what the violations are and the corrective method. The corrective method in this case would either be get a permit, bring it up to code or to get a demolition permit and, and take it down. Uh, here is her request. You've seen her request and her reasons for her request. Uh, here's what the property looks like and these are the photos taken and these properties are, uh, were taken on March 3rd. Um, these photos are reflective of what the property and the condition of the property is today. As you see, a lot of uncompleted construction.
Yes.
Just a quick question I have to ask.
Please.
Is the camera at an angle or is the building at an angle?
Cause I was looking at the pictures and I just was not sure.
It, I, I'm thinking the building has an angle, but I'm, I'm unsure. So I thought I'd ask.
It is on a slope. There is a grading concern and I believe, uh, code enforcement officer Wes Nelson is the best person to describe that situation based on his observations, but there is, it is on a slope. The property is on a slope. There is a grading issue that has concerns where the fence structure is starting to lean due to the grading issues. Um, so, but I think our code officer who observed it is in the best position to describe that. Um, and then also he took this photo so he could tell you whether he was standing on a slant or that property or the photos on a slant. As you can see, a lot of unfinished construction. My understanding is that this property, um, this is something we've been dealing with for a while and we've been trying to work to get this issue corrected. It's, um, you know, there's just a point where we just had to kind of dig in. We couldn't really work any further. There was really no avenues to compliance. So we just had to issue our notices and kind of move forward. But my understanding, it's half of a camper and then someone just kind of built in around it. And this is the work that they did when they built around it. Also, I want to, uh, emphasize that there is no septic tank on the property. They kind of created their own septic and it was leaking to the ground. Um, so there is, they built the house before putting a septic in. I think we, as we all know, you first have to have the septic, the leach lines, and then you determine where you put, locate your structure on the property. So you don't compromise or build over those tanks or leach lines as well. Um, their source, the power source was a battery connected to some solar panels. That is also a fire risk and an issue in itself, unpermitted electrical. You can see the headers were installed without proper framing support, propane fueled water heater installed with no exhaust system. I do also want to, uh, explain to the board, we, we did have an extensive communication with Ms. Anglero. Um, we did try to explore any pathways to compliance that may help her in her situation. It is a, um, a sad situation and I do feel for the property owner in this situation. She bought a property, uh, thinking that she could have a house on there um, only to come to find out that, um, the house is unpermitted and not up to code and requires a lot more than she thought. So I am sympathetic to the property in this situation, but at the same time, it is unpermitted. It is constructed poorly. Um, if it stays up there, it would be a safety issue to any wealth, uh, the welfare of any occupants. Also, if that house is to fall and go down, it could cause potential property damage or a safety issue to an individual. Um, if that house is to collapse or if there's any seismic activity that would destabilize it. And then you also have the health and safety issue, no septic and waste has been leaking onto the ground or being discharged onto the ground, which is a environmental health issue as well. Um, that being said, um, I conclude my portion of the, uh, presentation. I'm asking the board to uphold our notice and allow us to move forward with the demolition. Uh, the chief building official has reviewed the property. I think he just left for an emergency phone call if I had to take a guess. So he can provide any, he can provide any, uh, answer any questions that the board may have. And then our officer code, uh, code officer Wes Nelson is also here to answer any questions as he is actually was on site and he can describe his ob- observations from a, uh, direct standpoint or first. or first-person standpoint.
Thank you for that. Diana, would you like to go ahead and, uh, speak to us about, uh, this hearing?
Yes, um, I bought the property, I think in September of twenty-two, and it was absolutely filthy, and it absolutely needs code, to be cleaned. I just wanna say that. And I cleaned it, I cleaned it with my sons, my family, friends, for two years. I cleaned everything. You have been very nice, because they told me what to do and about the dumps, and I, I've done everything they said. Uh, in the process, my hip came out, I've been hospitalized four times this year. But, I got the job done, the property is clean. And I moved, he asked me to move those solar panels, I moved them myself. I went out there and I got a drill and I moved it myself. I did the dumps by myself, I did everything. That property is built on rock. I challenge you, I'd like someone who, another person to go out there, because that rock, that house is built on rock. It's not gonna fall down the mountain, I guarantee you. And so, uh, I bought it, there was an old man, he died recently, the neighbors have confirmed that. He, this house has been in full use for, I don't know, twenty years or something. There's, I saw chickens there, like thirty, people were living there. I know they sold me my dream, but I, but I, what I saw was real. You know, I saw a real dream. And they said I bought a vacant lot, but it wasn't vacant. I bought my home, I spent all my money on it when my mom died. And so, um, I just, and I was taking it apart, and everything's out, and I'm living the way I guess you want me to live, and that's unsuitable for me. And I feel that, the house has been there for thirty years, you know, somebody lived and died there, they sold it to me. You guys live right upstairs, like, red tag, court, police, you're right here, you have lunch together. I don't understand why the code enforcement, you don't have a little computer algorithm that, if it was red tagged one week, you know, now they're in queue computers one day. If it's red tagged in, in a week, then when that thirty days went by, it should've just been flagged and the sale stopped. You know, I feel the county is partly responsible, and then I lived there for two years, and I'm so graciously grateful for that, but also, I work my butt every day, seven days a week, twelve hours a day, cleaning it. And so, I wanna work out a way it's preexisting, and I wanna work out a way that you can come, and I'll do whatever you say to fix it.
Alright, uh, any questions? Is there anyone else in the chambers that would like to speak on this? Yes, uh... Yeah, if we have questions, we'll ask Jack to come up. Go ahead, supervisor.
Oh, oh, I have a little more, sorry.
If you can make it, yes, if you could.
I, I complied, like I said, I, I did the dumps, I did everything. And then, I, I did, I took out, I tried to do the demolition permit, but I'm old, and they just recently, a couple months ago, changed over to this, this weird thing, and you have to use it with the computer, and I don't know how to do that, and I'm trying. But I did manage to do some of it, and I managed to go to the air quality, because I'm trying to work with them. I did everything they asked, and it stopped at the air quality department. Cost me a thousand dollars, and I don't even have food. I have canaries I raise, and the property, I, when I bought the house, it was surrounded with bales of hay, I kid you not. It was, it was like a Joby home. I took all the hay off, and what is still there is what, is what I bought. And I have canaries there, and in the bale of hay was three cats, and I never had cats in my life, and now I have five kittens. But anyway, that's not the point. Point is, it's preexisting, and I'd like to work with the county. And I, I did, I paid a thousand dollars for this report, and that's where it stopped. They haven't finished it or contacted me or anything.
Supervisor Sabatia?
Yeah, outside of the electrical and the other hazardous stuff, like the septic, just kinda, right now would be for demolition, that would be the abatement that is proposed, is that correct?
So, we're proposing a demolition, but if she's willing to get the permits, get septic in there and get it permitted up to code, we wouldn't have an issue with that.
And my, my comment that I wanna continue with is, I don't wanna destroy good bones if there is possibility, and I'd like to hear from the building inspector of, is this a salvageable building, or does it really just need to go, cause there's no way to save it?
And just to be clear with the board, part of our processes is when we review these substandard structures, our code enforcement officer Wes Nelson, he does work with the building official to see if the property does meet that criteria, criteria for demolition. So we just don't make this decision, we go to our expert, which in this county is our chief building official. We have him review photos, he's also been to the property, I believe. And so he's assessed this himself, and, um, I think it's probably best that he come up here and speak and, uh, relay his observations, concerns, and his assessment of the property, so that the board has that information to possibly make a decision on.
So if you'd like to come up, please, and, uh, give us your input.
Good, uh, morning, afternoon, board, uh, my name is Jack Smalley, I'm the chief building official for the county. So, just a little history on this, I had a building inspector out there two, two and a half years ago, and there was a little travel trailer built inside this thing with a big garage. That looks like it's either been pulled out or modified to part of the house there, you know. In my opinion, uh, there's parts of the roof that are built with TGIs laying flat, uh, which has no structural support for a roof. The, uh, one of the pitches on there, I think hillside stability can cause an issue with it, with the house. And there's just a number of things where I see, uh, like I said, structural support, items like that, that, you know, and, and again, like Marcus says, you know, if she's willing to put the plans together, submit for a permit, get the septic up to par, I think that, I don't see any problem why the building department couldn't move forward with that.
Has, has that been proposed to her, uh, during this process?
I believe so.
That hasn't happened?
No, I believe it's been proposed.
How much time would that, would that incur?
It, it all depends on whether she can get plans drawn up, um, how she can submit the application, pay for the, uh, building permit, and then, um, you're going into the winter season, so construction's a little slower in the winter season due to weathering. But, Jack, you have any comments?
I mean, you have to keep in mind, you know, the, the county, uh, reduced the minimum size of housing from seven twenty to three sixty, so three sixty is a, a very feasible size house to build. We actually have free plans on our website now, as well, that, you know, you don't have to pay money to have these plans drawn up and everything. We already have more, we already, we have one, I'm sorry, we have one online for four hundred and thirty-two square feet that's free to the public. There's, there's aspects of the plans that you have to complete, like the sprinklers and the title twenty-four, but for the most part, you know, they're there.
And I, I also...
I have a question, because you mentioned that you were trying to get a demolition permit.
Well, because I was trying to comply.
Can we show the microphone?
Yes, yes, come on.
Yes, I was, because I wanted to comply, because I wanted to fix it. My dream home, that wasn't really my dream home, as you could tell. I wanted to fix it, and so, I cleaned it all, and they never got back to me, and I thought it was okay, and then they came back two years later, and it's like, nope, this is... And then I did take the tank out, cause you saw, I only have that little water heater, and he said, this is absolutely not, not okay, and he warned me I could die, and I didn't know that, and I took it out even before he left.
So, is your intent to demo, demo this house, and...
My intention to do whatever I have to do to save it, because my canaries and animals, that's all we have.
But you wanna save the structure? Or you wanna demo it and build something new?
I'd like to work with them and come up with a solution. I, I'd like to keep, you see, this is a recycled house, everything here is free, you know.
But, but this is not a safe place to live.
That's what, if you come in there, you will think differently. I invite you to come over.
Is it really slanted like this?
No.
Is this the picture?
It's the picture.
Jack?
It's on flat land, you should come see.
Let's let Jack speak.
Sorry.
Oh, actually, go ahead, Marcus, briefly.
Regarding slope, I think Maria pulled up the slope on, um, GIS.
I actually just passed Jack a note, typically, uh, this may be a, uh, an even or a, uh, flat area, but it's very slim, surrounded by thirty percent slope. There are severe slopes out here, and I actually was checking to see if these were substandard or their subdivisions due to the slope. They're not, but I was then asking a question to Jack to see, typically, when we have these slopes, we're looking for a geotechnical report on the compaction of the soil. This may have a foundation on it already that hasn't been looked at, we're gonna need that. So, so bringing this house, this particular house into compliance is not gonna be inexpensive.
Right, it's probably easier to have this house demoed and rebuild something new, if you wanted to rebuild a tiny home or use one of these plans. But the fact is, there's no septic, there's no water, there's no power.
There's a redwood septic. You guys are telling me things that aren't there are there.
It is not compliant.
Well, that's true.
Right.
Go ahead, Jack.
And that's, though, these are all of the issues.
But I bought it that way, and you knew it.
So ma'am, let, let's, go ahead, Jack.
So, along with any structure in Lake County, because the high seismic zone we live in has to have a foundation, a perimeter concrete foundation. I don't know if this has it, uh, but there are the slopes that I, that are a concern. Slope stability on the downhill side of that would be a concern. But again, there, there are designs for smaller houses, there would be much, much, much more safer, so...
And the ability to get utilities to this property?
Well, if it's, if it's, so PG&E has a plan that if it's gonna be, uh, a considerable hardship to get PG&E to somewhere, you can go off-grid. And we allow that, community development does allow that.
And water?
The septic, well, the water has, there has to be a way to get water there.
And there's a well, and there's...
Is there a well?
There's a tank, a three thousand gallon tank, and the truck comes up and fills it up when it's empty, and I watered that land, and I, I keep everything safe.
Yeah, I don't know how that works out with planning, having a water tank. But the septic, water, power, power can be off-grid, you know, so...
These all need to be in the plans?
Yes, ma'am.
Before a permit.
And there's no plans as of now?
And, yes.
Alright, Helen, go ahead.
Also, a less expensive way might be a smaller modular, single wide modular. I have a feeling that finances, again, are playing a role. And the last thing we wanna do is to have somebody, uh, put another person out on the streets. So seeing what you can do, whatever's financially, um, feasible, whether it, whether you can bring it up to, um, to, you know, legal. But we also have to look at the structure that's there, and what the, um, the county code was at that time when it was put in, right? I mean, do we need to look at that, I'm asked, that's a question.
Very true, but the considerable amount of work that needs to be done of this would all, all of that would have to be current code. My suggestion would be to have a designer or engineer go up there, take a look at it, measure it out, and see what is actually salvageable.
Okay, yeah, that was just my question, what, because obviously, there's, there's a financial aspect to this, and like I said, the last thing we wanna do is, um, have somebody else under a bridge, so...
Go ahead, Mark, Marcus, go ahead. Ma'am, you'll go right after, and I'll...
Building, so, the building codes that are applicable is not when the structure is built, it's when the application is submitted and reviewed by our plans examiner.
I see.
So if she submitted her app, uh, application today for a building permit, the codes as they sit today would be the codes applicable, not at the time that was constructed. And if I had to guess, Jack is a better, uh, witness on this, or expert, uh, can give better testimony on this. The codes have not changed that much in the last two or three years.
Okay.
Well, it, you know, I mean, if it was a permitted structure, and it was done twelve years ago, it would kind of, some of that would be based off of that code. But any new construction to it or repairs would have to be current code.
Right, well, it sounds like, um, what she had mentioned was that there was an elderly person that had lived there for, it sounds like, many years. So, you know, if it was thirty years ago, or, you know, I just didn't know if any of it, if, if any of it would be, um, still pertinent today, um, to make it a little easier, if not. That was just a question.
Again, if it was a permitted structure, then...
Okay.
And I'd like to add, we do our research before we go to, go to these properties. Part of our built-in processes is to do research for building permits or zoning permits. We did not find any permits on record.
I see.
Alright, so ma'am, ma'am, you had one more thing to say.
And I'm sorry, I'd just like to add one other thing. Unfortunately, in this, I apologize, board, uh, chair, um, in the Nice area, you have a lot of unpermitted construction up there.
Right.
A lot.
Okay, thank you, Marcus.
Ma'am, if you could finish.
And I just wanted to add that you're mentioning about the financial part of it. My family, I have four sons and a marine, and my ex-husband is, does construction, you know, licensed, and that's how I got this done, was their help, and I have their, their help, even though I don't make a lot of money.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, so my mind's thinking, um, what's more comparable to help her with what's current? Or, like Supervisor Pisca said, going through this process and then rebuilding? I, how does that look for you all, can you do either, how does it work?
We, we, code enforcement, and I apologize, I don't mean to speak for the whole department, but I would say code enforcement, our position be whatever works out for everybody, for the, for the county, the surrounding community, and for the property owner. I mean, obviously, we're always looking for those solutions, but in this case, I don't know that, um, you know, this property's just sitting there, it's been sitting here for two, three years. The question is, do you want this property just sitting there in this state for another two or three years? Um, I think finances is a real issue, um, if there was a...
I think so.
If there was a plan in place where we could have, you know, certain timetables set up, that's what we call a compliance plan. We would be all for that, but, um, unfortunately, and with no disrespect, the property owner has not provided any assurances or anything that tangible that we can rely on.
Ma'am, ma'am, let's finish, I will give you the opportunity to speak one more time.
She did get the asbestos report, and I'll give, that's the first step, but then you have to come up with the money to demo it, and then also to remove the asbestos material by a properly certified or licensed hazmat person, and then to have a demo company. I would say this is probably in the range of twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars. So, the question is, you know, I, obviously, I, I, I hope it does happen, and I hope you do get, get a home on this property that's in compliance and safe. And that's the major thing, it's not safe for anybody to be in there. And then also, if people want to go in and just live in there and do whatever in there, it's a safety issue for them as well, so...
Alright, Supervisor Sabatia, you have your pen up.
I mean, just reviewing these pictures some more, uh, I think the second picture is what kinda sells me. Sorry, not the second picture, the fourth picture, where you can see the, what looks like maybe two by twelves that are falling apart, and there's the pipeline for the sewer right underneath it, which goes in, into a hole, like, the, the whole thing seems to be deteriorating. Uh, a good atmospheric river is gonna have more erosion, uh, the building is right there. I, I think eventually, the inevitable is that this does need to be demolished, and hopefully, we can get something new. Wondering if there can be a conditional, where if in thirty days you don't get a permit, and we go ahead and move forward, that way we don't have to come back. Wondering if that's possible, just to give her the benefit of the doubt, that maybe in thirty days, we can make things happen. If it doesn't, then we move forward with the demolition, and hopefully, we can get a tiny home, something that's acceptable and appropriate to build there, if that's, uh, to your liking, Chair, since this is your district.
Yeah, I, I actually like that.
So we call that a compliance plan. If we had something in writing where she said that she would do, complete these goals at a set time, that would be something we're open to. Obviously, I'm not the director, that's something that a director would have to probably agree to as well, um, or have some say in, um, but, you know, at the end of the day, I, it's, it's a, it's a difficult property to build on, and...
Maria?
It, it may be helpful for the board if, if we just took a brief break, because I'm pretty sure she's gonna need to have a well installed as well. I, I'm bouncing off staff, if we've ever approved a single-family residence permit with only a water tank from outside water source, I don't think we have, I'd never have in eighteen years. But we have staff checking to see if that's ever been done, but either way, there's extensive work, digging a well, getting a, a new septic excavation, and with that septic into whatever... Probably, I, I don't even know the, the construction, but, but to retrofit an existing home to current code is going to be significant with engineered plans and that kind of turnaround.
Supervisor?
Yeah, I'm not seeing any evidence with all of these safety concerns on this. Yeah, I'm not seeing any evidence with all of these safety concerns on this construction that it's salvageable. But, I mean, I, I haven't heard from a licensed contractor to know that. I mean, I'd be okay if, if, you know, that was checked. But where I'm leaning right now is that there's too many issues here and that I don't think we can, we can allow this structure to continue with what we have in front of us today.
Helen, you had your pen up, and then ma'am.
I did. I would like to see, I, I, as I understood when you were speaking, that part of your problem is a lot of it being on the computer and you not having, you not really understanding or something. So what I would like to see is if somebody from code enforcement can sit down with you, realistic options as far as what your avenues look like with the county. And I don't know, Ms. Maria, if you have, if you can do that, or if you can assign somebody to that?
We have staff available during all business hours to assist people with our Open Gov.
And let her know exactly what she needs to do to come in compliance, and what it would be, what it would look like if she were to try to fix that, and what her options are as far as going forward with, with another structure, a small home or something.
We would be happy to share the zoning clearance checklist we perform on every dwelling permit, which does include a sustainable or a, a water source, a secure water source.
Yes.
So a well, a septic system.
Sure.
Redesign the plans, stay away from the existing septic, whatever it would take to treat that, which I defer to EH. Special Districts was also watching this. They're checking to see what options there are for a sewer connection. But they haven't gotten back, they're, they're, haven't finished that. But either way, basic, uh, basic health and safety standards.
Sure.
Would be a lot for this property.
Totally, yeah.
No matter what they do.
Yeah.
Whether it's a new home or.
Yep.
Existing home, they have to do all that.
But just letting her know what her avenues are.
Sewer is not an option for this location. It's too remote. So it would need a new septic.
Yes, septic, yes.
Which my son could build.
And we have been through those, she, Ms. Anglero has been down to our department. She has met with our planning and our building division, so we had these discussions.
And I only stopped because I put appeal and come here. Otherwise, I don't like living like that. I would, you know, I'll do whatever they want.
And a well.
I'm gonna let this gentleman come up and.
Or get a trailer.
Ma'am, he, he's coming up.
Good afternoon. I'm Wesley Nelson, Lake County Code Enforcement, Code Officer. This was my case. This was one of the first cases I started working here. I felt really bad for this lady because when she did buy the property, at the same time period, a non-compliance was put on the property due to the structures from the Building and Safety Division. I went above and beyond trying to help her out. I went to the Solano Women in Medicine, and I spoke with a gentleman there named Leland Buckmaster, who met with her and was going over different options. He was looking at the property where he brought it to my attention about the septic systems on the property. There was concerns with that when he went down to environmental health. So I went down there and discussed it with him as well. There was never a permit for that property for septic. The previous owner applied for a percolation test but never followed through. However, each adjoining property around them have all failed their percolation tests. And due to the 30% grade, they said that a lot of the engineered septic systems would not work either. And if you look at some of my concerns with the hillside too, we're looking at the bottom side of the hill right here. If you see, those are fence posts in the ground. Those are probably six-foot fence posts buried in the ground as a retaining wall. And I do not have the pictures to show it now, but they're actually leaning, so the whole thing is shifting down the hillside. The septic tank that you are seeing is the old abandoned one, just directly below here. That's the abandoned one. There is a dug hole in the ground with a pit that the new pipe goes into. So, whatever system they had before had failed, and they had dug a pit. When asked her about it, she told me it had been there the whole time. I was questionable about that because everything had green grass, and where this pit was, there was zero grass. So it was definitely shown that something had been done there in that timeframe that, you know, in a, in a short timeframe, because there was no grass growing on it. We were able to move it to the side and find redwood, lumber, and water underneath it as like a holding septic tank.
What is the timeframe? When did you get involved and when did these?
This was in about March, I believe, or May?
So well over six months.
Well over six months ago. So once the appeal happened, we kinda just wait to see what was happening, but.
This issue's been going on for years. It's just now that we have staffing, we are now starting to address all these substandard issues. And we have a CDBG grant to start really addressing these in the, I think the county has, oh, I'm sorry.
But you've been working with her for a couple of years?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier.
Again, I think it's inevitable what needs to happen, but I'm still willing to say seriously, work with staff. You have 30 days. If you can't figure out in 30 days to get permits lined up, then I think we just need to move forward and start doing the abatement ourselves. But I, I, I don't want to see this come back because I think there's inevitability that it probably needs to be demolished. But I also want to make sure that we don't take out homes that can be fixed if we don't have to. And so I'm still looking at the conditional, just to have that opportunity.
I, I feel like staff has shown that they've worked with her for a long time. This is inevitable. This is a public safety hazard to the community. We're still in fire season. We will be in fire season for the next 30 days. This puts everybody at risk, and this is an unsafe place to live. And I really feel, I, I understand that this is a really difficult situation. But again, my comments are the same as the last one. An abatement will give you a fresh start, and that's what you need on this property, to figure out a safe place to live. And there are a lot of different programs that can help, once you have a blank canvas to work with.
Vice Chair.
Yeah, I mean, I, where I'm at is upholding the, the request. I think, you know, there could have been, if that was a possibility, that there was a contractor that could say it could be fixed, that could have been presented today. I'm not seeing any of that evidence. And because of the multitude of safety concerns with the building, I have to support this request.
Is there, someone wants to make?
I'll make the motion. Mr. Chair, I move that we uphold the notice of nuisance in order to abate and instruct staff to move forward with its abatement process to remove the structure by demolition.
Second.
Before we vote, I, I'd like to hear from the Chair, since this is your district, and I will support your position for this.
We're just ready to take the vote.
You ready to move on?
Yes, I'm ready to move forward. We'll have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries for one. All right, so follow up with code enforcement, and we'll go from there. Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're gonna take a five-minute break briefly, and we'll come back at 11:28. All right, welcome back. We're gonna move on to our next item, 67B. Addendum, consideration of support in the amount of $26,000 for the Lake County Economic Development Corporation, and $34,000 for the Lake County Chamber of Commerce. Ben Rickleman, we'll go ahead and give it for you.
Good morning, Board. Ben Rickleman, Deputy County Administrative Officer. I'm here with a funding request for two different organizations. The Lake County Economic Development Corporation and the Lake County Chamber of Commerce. There was an appearance before the Board a few weeks ago regarding the chamber. Since then, there's been a few developments, which I believe are important for consideration. First, the Board and the chamber have decided to do, I guess, what we call the soft merger. So they would remain separate organizations, but they would share an executive director, who will be Nicole Flora, who's currently the Executive Director for the EDC. Nicole has a large amount of economic development experience in Lake County, has worked and set up several different programs. I think this will be good for both organizations. Both of their Boards have explored how this will impact their operations and what Nicole can bring. It also provides the chamber some cost savings, which is important, with having a part-time director, so they are on their own, working for more efficiencies. Planning regarding kind of the chambers programming and what direction that might go, and that has sound promising. And then regarding the EDC, so the EDC has, since 2019, received a grant from the U.S. Department of Agriculture. It's the Rural Business Development Grant. It's about 109,000 annually. They were anticipating that being awarded this year, and that has not happened. So they've reached out to and have been working with Congressman Thompson's office to try to figure out what's going on with it. They have not gotten a response at the moment. The administration office has also started working with Paragon to try to identify and have them receive the funds. So with all that taken into consideration, we're coming back with this funding request. I think I'm more supportive of it this time than a few weeks ago because of this new structure, I think will really be beneficial for entrepreneurial support in Lake County. I think the EDC does a bunch of good programming. And so the county has supported the EDC with a $10,000 annual match for this RBDG. So, and just to kinda cover what all the EDC does, it's part of the Small Business Development Center Network. So it provides a free one-on-one consulting service, which I think is really important. It is part of a national network through the Small Business Administration. It can be both kind of experts on certain types of business operations and then with the type of industry. They also have a Spanish language program, which plugs into the Hispanic SBDC network, which I also think is really important. They have USDA revolving loan portfolio that supports small business. And so, through the last several years in Lake County, we've built out this ecosystem to support small business. We also have this CBDG micro enterprise program, which isn't part of this, but I think complements it well. And, so I think this, there's certain operational efficiencies here. There's stronger collaboration, and then there's this unexpected funding. I know there was the concern raised regarding, sometimes the chambers could be political organizations or 501(c)(6). I think that's an important consideration. Previous agreements between the county and the chamber that happened in the 2010s, there's been annual agreements which have specified. annual agreements which have specified the funding cannot be used for any political matters. So I'd be comfortable with an agreement of that sort, and the Chamber has been supportive of that. The Chambers also, they've stated, they've gone in more of a convenia role than political advocacy, so like the Lake Pillsbury Town Hall, and that's what they want to do in this upcoming year. So it doesn't, I think those are good strategies to address those concerns. And also, and I'm just trying to think through how to structure this. So I think that addresses most of the concerns. We do, so the EDC, if they received that Rural Business Development Grant, they would repay the amount. So that's what we're concentrating on right now, but where federal funding stands at the moment, we're not sure, so we want to have this continuity of service, and I think this funding would really assist with that. I do, we have Nicole Flora here. Nicole, do you want to add any comments?
Thank you, Ben. Good morning, Lake County Supervisors. My name's Nicole Flora, and I'm the Executive Director of the Lake County Economic Development Corporation. Before I share my statement, I'd like to present a letter of support from the EDC's Board President. Unfortunately, he wasn't here to speak on behalf of this request today, but he did send this to the county offices after hours last night, so I printed some copies for you to have in your records. "I want to thank you for considering this joint funding request submitted in partnership with the Lake County Chamber of Commerce and the Visitor Center. The EDC was founded under a different name but similar mission in 1987. Since then, through various iterations, it has provided support to your local businesses. First, with a locally managed loan program, which we still continue today, and later with free one-on-one business advising, workshops, and leading initiatives like industry events, such as the Restaurant Expo, the Restaurant Week, and the Heart Hub, among many others. However, this year we face a serious challenge. Our USDA Rural Business Development Grant expires on September 30. The federal office has yet to inform partners of the plans for their next allocation of funding. Without the requested support, the EDC's ability to deliver services is at risk. So that's why this joint request is so important. By co-locating and sharing staff with the Lake County Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center, we can create a lean, efficient model that reduces overhead and maximizes impact. This funding will allow us to retain key personnel, continue our programming, and ensure that Lake County businesses, entrepreneurs, and visitors have access to the resources that they need. Thank you for considering partnering with our agencies to keep the momentum going while our funding remains in flux. With your support, we can continue building a resilient business and tourism economy that reflects the best of Lake County."
Just like to add a few other notes. So this funding request would come from funds that are currently allocated for the future. I'm gonna come to the Board, planning October 7th for a fee deferral program, so just the top line amount with the budget a few weeks ago. But I think it's still reasonable to operate, to capitalize the fund with that reduction, so it'd go from 900,000 to 840,000. So that is a deferral for primarily impact fees to encourage development in the county, and I think that's really important, and this can definitely help on the margins for that. But to balance that and keeping our entrepreneurial, small business support system strong is why I thought it was a good decision, or at least a recommendation for that shift. And then, does anyone from the Chamber want to speak briefly?
Yes, thank you for the opportunity. Good morning, good afternoon, Lake County Board of Supervisors. My name is Amanda Martin, and this is my last week as being CEO of the Lake County Chamber of Commerce. So if you recall the last time that I was here advocating for the County of Lake to reestablish the funding of the Chamber's operation of the Vista Point Visitor Center, discussion was had about looking at ways that all of our different organizations could collaborate. And today, what we're really excited about is that we're bringing you just that solution. So through partnership with the Economic Development Corporation and shared executive leadership with Nicole Flora, this is a really wonderful proposal, in my opinion. So this proposal has been approved and enthusiastically backed by both the Lake County Chamber of Commerce Board Directors and the Economic Development Corporation Board Directors. So I just want to refresh and reiterate why the original funding request came before you from the Chamber, and that funding request is for the Lake County Chamber of Commerce to reestablish funding support from the County of Lake for the Chamber's operation of the Vista Point Visitor Center, which is a county-designated facility and function. So the County of Lake and the Lake County Chamber of Commerce have had this partnership for over 22 years, where the Chamber is operating this Visitor Center. But as I've said, for the past six years, the Lake County Chamber of Commerce has received zero funding support from the County of Lake to do this. So again, that means that the Chamber's small business membership are the ones keeping the doors open of the Visitor Center. That's what all of this is about, from the Chamber's perspective. So this is what this request is for. It's not for the Chamber's programs or advocacy work. So in a commitment to collaboration, the Chamber Board of Directors have decided to share our original request of 60,000 with the Economic Development Corporation, granting the EDC 26,000 and lowering the Chamber's request to 34,000. So again, but we're excited about this proposal. And what we respectfully request from you today is to also be a part of this collaboration. And I personally think that this can set a great example and precedence for all of Lake County, that we are always stronger when working together, collaborating, and uplifting each other's work. So thank you for your consideration of this item today. And just on a personal note, thank you for the opportunity to work with you over my tenure here at the Lake County Chamber of Commerce. It's been a true pleasure, so thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Don.
Board of Supervisors, thank you. My name is Don Smith. I represent Adventist Health on the Board, Board of Directors of the Lake County Chamber of Commerce. And Amanda, I want to echo what she was saying in terms of our Board. We have had a great season with Amanda at the helm as our Executive Director, and we've learned a lot of things in the last, under her leadership, she's brought some things forward. We've looked at some things in the past, and we're excited about moving forward. We're excited about the opportunity, the Board is excited about this new structure of collaboration and moving forward in partnerships, not only with the EDC, but with business organizations across our county, and with the county itself. Meeting with Ben, we've talked about ways that the Chamber can be a voice for the good things that the county is doing as it regards to business and those kinds of things. But again, when we come back to it, we think about, you know, keeping the doors to the Visitor Center open, but also our ability to advocate, and I, that word, using it carefully, but advocate for good business opportunities all across our county. And we're excited about what the future holds with this new structure moving forward and viability. So we thank you for listening and hearing this in consideration.
All right. So with that, who's first?
I think this is a good plan. We've talked a lot about efficiencies over this year, and this is a way to bring efficiencies to both of these organizations. My questions were answered, because as you know, I have concerns about public dollars being used for a private or membership benefit. So as long as the funds are used for public benefit only, I'm okay with that. And also, the, if the grant does come through and is funded, if that, if those funds could be repaid, I'm okay with that, too. So, yeah, moving forward, this is a plan that works for me. Is this intended as one time?
Yes. So that's what the discussion has been, and that's how the memo's framed. It's not an annual operating agreement. So yes, this is considered a one time.
Okay, so will there be a contract that's drafted that has this non-advocacy language in it?
Yes.
Different advocacy, Don?
Yeah. So because the change in Director happened, and the Boards for the two organizations moving fairly quickly, there just wasn't time to get an agreement together. We wanted to get in front of the Board before Amanda was done with her tenure with the Chamber. But yes, we plan to put in an agreement together.
Okay, thank you.
Right, Lexira.
Yes, thank you. Starting with the Chamber portion of it, I have been in support of assisting them, you know, since we were talking about the budget with regard to the Visitor Center. I think that that's a county function that we've been, we've supported them for years on that county function. We own that facility. The intent was years ago that, you know, we would help provide funding to operate that Visitor Center and keep the doors open. So I think that with regard to that part of it, you know, we can, we can have language in that agreement showing that the 34,000 is for the Visitor Center portion of the operation to continue to run that. I think that's very, would be very simple language to show that. As far as the EDC, I know our Board was in favor, back when we talked about this before, of looking at further opportunities and collaboration, is my recollection, and I think, you know, staff's gone out and worked with those groups, and we have an opportunity to have some more collaboration with, you know, we don't necessarily have to have multiple organizations that are kind of doing the same thing. So I think the more we can collaborate, the better, and this is an opportunity to get that started. And with this, you know, funding for this year, I think we have more opportunities to continue to work with the Chamber, the EDC, and other groups to even make further forward movement in trying to organize better and collaborate better. I think the EDC, the Economic Development Corporation, one of our significant priorities is economic development, and we already have a partnership with them, so I think it's important that we assist with that. We don't know what the USDA grant funding is gonna come through. So, you know, I'm happy to get paid back if that funding comes through and if everything fits with their audits, but at the same time, if it doesn't, then I'm not worried about that. I think it's supporting what we're, we already are involved in with trying to improve our economic development. Thank you.
All right. Supervisor Spatia, and then I'll go to you, Lars. Lars, go ahead.
Lars, you're the Public Services Director. I realize this is before public input, but just in a response to Supervisor Rasmussen, it's important to note that the county does not own the facility. The county is under an operating agreement with the city and, to quite honest, originally with the state as well, Caltrans. So the county is responsible for maintenance of the facility and the grounds, the building itself, and the grounds are owned by the, by the City of Lakeport. So I just wanted to add that clarity for you.
All right. Supervisor Spatia.
I want to start out with Ms. Martin. I know that you are on your way out, and thank you for not stepping away, because that would be easy. Thank you for still being here. Thank you for continuing to advocate, and appreciate that you have had both feet in the entire time and still right now. And so, it's so easy to walk away when you know your time is getting short, and, but here you are, continuing to advocate. Yes, I appreciate the comments from Vice Chair Rasmussen, in the sense that there was kind of a hope for conversations of how do we work better together. That happened fast, but I'm hoping it's not the last of the conversations. I will say, today, I'm in support. I want to make sure that we get good reporting on the return on the investment, on what it is that we get from continuing this relationship or starting this relationship, rebooting the relationship. I think it's important that we figure out what's the measurements that we want, and how do we enhance those measurements in the future, so that we are doing a service to those that are coming to our community to know where to go, and so on and so forth. Personal statement, I can appreciate that maybe in a contract, we say this money cannot be used for such and such. But I still want to see, and that's gonna be based on you guys, but I want to see you guys advocating as hard as you can for your businesses, and then that's, if that's disagreeing with us in the sense of what we're about to enact here at this Board, that's where your voice is most important, and I don't think that should have any bearing on this relationship, because we need to understand and hear all points and angles at all times, and not quiet those voices for the future, so that we better understand what we're doing and the impact we have. I know it's not in there, but we spoke about membership. I hope we can still do that. If we can be a member of CSAC, a member of NACO, a member of RCRC, who are advocacy groups, I don't see why we can't be embedded in the Lake County Chamber of Commerce as well. I just don't see that as being a problem. Again, just me looking for future conversation on that. The Lake County Economic Development Corporation has done a great job of not only providing resources for our local businesses, but bringing people from the outside as well, with all of their marketing that they do, all of their, not conferences, but their expos and their other gatherings that they put together. I just spoke to a supervisor from Trinity County, he's gonna be coming down in January for the expo that's happening, and I'm sure he's one of many that will be coming into the county, because it's a regional draw. So I appreciate the programs that they do. I think there's a lot of overlap between the two groups. I think there's still a lot of overlaps with other groups, and that's when I'll mention the last one, which is the Clear Lake Chamber of Commerce. They also run a Visitor Center. They have not requested money. Closed mouths don't get fed, they probably should ask. But at the same time, I'm hoping that in the future, there's more talks of better collaboration and better consolidation of the same type of agency, so we can work better countywide. And I apologize, my last comment. I know we also had a Visitor Center in the Lucerne area, I believe it used to be, if I'm correct. And I think that was a loss when that shut down. And so I don't want to see the one in Lakeport shut down. I don't want to see the one in Clear Lake shut down. I think we need to continue to have easy-to-access resources for people within our community and coming from outside of our community to make sure that they know where to go and what services we're offering here in the area. So today, I'll be supporting this offer, and thank you for bringing it to us.
All right. Supervisor Owen.
Well, I'm excited. This is something I wanted to see, and I'm very much in support of it. I think it's important, and I think that the work that you're doing is important. I was, I did go and visit with Amanda. Thank you, just went poof. So Ms. Amanda, at the Visitor Center, and we had some really good talks. We also talked about some, some things that are missing in our community, the pamphlets and that kind of stuff. So we did bring up some of those issues. There's also, though I'm very much supportive of this, one of the things that was brought to my attention recently was having things available when visitors are here, quite often on the weekends, and so Friday, Saturday, Sunday kind of times, and that's something I think needs to be looked at, is having Visitor Centers open when we have them in the area. So I hope that we can look at that as well, and expanding our Visitor Centers back to what they were, you know, a decade or more ago. I remember there was one in Middletown, there was one in Lucerne. So looking at that expansion, I think if at all possible, and perhaps with the, with you guys teaming up, that might be something that we could really realize. So no, I'm excited. Thank you.
All right, with that, I know that we hadn't heard from a couple of folks in the public, but I'm gonna open it up for the public, in case there's anyone else that'd like to make a comment on this item. Go ahead, come on up. Go ahead, come on up.
Good afternoon, or good good morning, Tom Lasik. Um I I also want to thank um Ms. Martin for her service to the community and to the chamber. Uh when this was brought up a few weeks ago, my concern was uh not that they needed money or anything like that, but it'd be done properly and that there's a way forward. I think Supervisor Piska was concerned about it and rightly so. So um the money is going to the EDC, which is a fine organization, as is the Chamber of Commerce. Uh I just asked that the it be made in a way that um is contractual, is binding. It's not construed as a gift or anything else that would then cause, you know, the county to have to uh retract it for procedural reasons. So it it has sort of written service agreement or contract. You need the reporting, you need the auditing. It needs to be for something specific like the visitor center or a specific program. So it's just as a friendly reminder, um I think from what I hear, you're all on board on that. I still have a concern with a conflict of interest as being the county funding supervisors as board members themselves. I just I don't see a problem with individual board members um, you know, joining any group. That's a First Amendment uh privilege that we all have. But I do have a concern with conflict if the board of supervisors of the county itself sponsors that. I I think you all have uh the resources to do it individually. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, come on up.
Hello, Board. Wildashak, Economic Development Consultant with the City of Lakeport and Secretary of the Lake County Tourism Improvement District. As uh you know, I have a background in destination marketing, visitor services, economic development, workforce development. With those uh experiences, I feel in a unique position to encourage your support, your continuing support, think beyond the immediate, think into the future, the potential for collaboration. I think some of the work that's underway, in particular what Nicole and the EDC has started with a business roundtable, there's the opportunity for more networking with some of our business associations, including the Clear Lake Chamber, some of the other volunteer entities in the county bringing a a stronger force for that. Um I I think there's a lot of potential, so. And I would like to read a statement from Brian Fisher, the Executive Director of the TID, who is traveling. So officially, the Lake County Economic Development Corporation and the Lake County Chamber of Commerce are vital partners in advancing the mission of the Lake County Tourism Improvement District. Together, we have successfully delivered high-impact conferences highlighting Lake County's diverse industries and produced two professional visitor guides that promote the very best our county has to offer. These collaborations have strengthened our economy, elevated our visibility, and created measurable benefits for local businesses. For these reasons, the Lake County Tourism Improvement District strongly endorses bridge funding for these two essential organizations whose continued work is critical to sustaining Lake County's growth and success. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Come on up.
My Board of Supervisors, thank you so much. I'm Michelle Carson, Chair of the Lake County Certified Tourism Ambassador Program, the which is under the umbrella of the Lake County Chamber of Commerce. I first want to thank Nicole, Flora, and Amanda Martin for all the work that they do. Um I just want Helen to your point of um ha- and and Bruno's too, of working with the other chamber, um with the Clear Lake Chamber. I want to offer up the CTA program to help with some of that bridging. Um I I totally agree that that is a direction we should be heading and looking at other visitor center locations. Um I'm fairly new to the county, so I wasn't aware of a Middletown and a Lucerne visitor center, but totally agree they should be in those areas. So if there's a way, the CTAs can be involved in that. And Helen, to your point of having visitor centers open on weekends when tourists are here, would love to offer up seeing if there's a way CTAs can be involved with helping staff that. I'm speaking on behalf of all of them, and we'll see if we can get some visitors, but I would love to to explore that. So thank you. Thank you for your consideration for all of this.
Thank you. There's not any any other comment. Oh, come on up.
Good afternoon, Board. Margot Cambara, Lake County resident. Uh my comments are based on written public comments sent earlier this morning. Um thank you for your commitment to budget and fiscal uh stewardship and quality outcomes. Priorities identified during your governance workshop in March. In that spirit, I respectfully recommend against the requested fund stabilization for um Lake County Economic Development Corporation, EDC, and Lake County Chamber of Commerce, the chamber, as it's presented to you now. Um as Supervisor or Vice Chair Rasmussen has um suggested, I see that as a way forward to meet the needs of the community, the business community, and to preserve the um independence of your board and that of the county. To have funds allocated for a specific line item rather than a nebulous contribution for administrative costs. I think that is a a good way forward. But to continue my um prepared remarks, um so in that spirit of your governance workshop, I respectfully um suggest that you take a closer look at the idea of that shared executive director uh because uh if it's just funds for administrative costs, it weakens accountability, blurs governance, and misaligns with outcome-based funding. For transparency and accountability, project and program funding is preferred uh to administrative subsidies to pay salaries. County-funded work should have a defined scope, defined outputs and outcomes, metrics, and periodic reporting tied to payment. Uh this approach reflects Supervisor Sabatier's interest in identifying metrics to gauge program effectiveness, such as for the TID, the Tourism Improvement District. And to support the chamber's visitor center work, a better solution is to enter a performance-based agreement with the chamber for defined scope of work, quarterly metrics, and defines expected outcomes with payments tied to milestones. And this approach aligns with the principles of good governance, transparency, and accountability. Similarly, to support EDC, performance-based contracts offer a better path. Consider a request for proposal with defined outputs. From a management perspective, a single executive director accountable to two separate boards invites conflicts of priority, diluted accountability, and opaque supervision. EDC and the chamber provide services that benefit Lake County, as do several nonprofit organizations in the county. If if the county stabilizes EDC chamber revenues, other nonprofits and business associations will reasonably request parity. To preserve fairness, your board should avoid open-ended stabilization. Instead, adopt neutral eligibility frameworks for public grants, for public benefit, measurable outcomes,
Can you wrap that, please?
requirements and audit rights. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Yes, come on up.
Good morning, Honorable Chair and members of the board. My name is Autumn Carcy. I'm a local business owner and proud to serve as a board member on the Lake County Chamber of Commerce. I'm here today in support of restoring funding for our county visitor center operated through the Chamber of Commerce. The visitor center is the front door to Lake County. It is often the first interaction for tourists, new residents, and business prospects within our community. From welcoming visitors to showcasing local attractions, providing maps, referrals, and connections, the visitor center directly drives tourism dollars into our local economy. Every dollar invested here multiplies into lodging, dining, shopping, and returns visits, which sustain our local economy and our small businesses. While our chamber and its volunteers dedicate countless hours to running a fully functioning visitor center that requires constant staffing, materials, and outreach, passion alone is not enough. It takes a real investment to keep our doors open, brochures stocked, phones answered, and websites updated. The county has funded this initiative in the past, and we are simply asking you to restore that proven support. Other counties treat their visitor centers as essential public infrastructure for tourism and economic development. For example, Mariposa County funds its chambers to operate the visitor center at over two hundred thousand dollars per year with multi-year contracts up to seven hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Tuoluma, Tuolumne County dedicates a portion of its lodging tax, generating more than one point five million annually for tourism promotion. El Dorado has provided hundreds of thousands of dollars in support to chambers' visitors initiatives. Against those benchmarks are asked today as conservative, but it would have an outsized impact here in Lake County. As someone who contributes to the cannabis tax fund, I cannot think of a better reinvestment of those dollars than ensuring Lake County has a welcoming, professional, and fully restored visitor center. This is not just about supporting an organization, it's about supporting every business, every attraction, and every job that benefits from the tourism economy. We ask you today to renew your investment in the visitor's center so that we can continue showcasing Lake County, welcoming visitors, and fueling the economic viability of our community. Thank you for your time and your continued commitment to Lake County's future.
Thank you. All right, if there's no other comments, I'll bring you back to the board. Is there any on Zoom? All right, I'll bring you back to the board. Vice Chair, or I don't know who's first.
I just want to quickly apologize for misstating the ownership. I know there's a lot of moving parts to that um of the facility, but I think the important point is it was built with public funds and it's publicly owned. And the chamber has been the operator with the intent that it be a visitor center. Thank you.
Supervisor Spatia.
I just wanted to say two things. Uh I I appreciate the public comments. Uh I I'm cautiously approaching those comments in the sense of we're talking about a one-year uh statement today of what we would do, uh but it suddenly sounded like we have a a new decades-long rebirth of uh the future of continued providing uh funds. And and I want to be careful that we are talking about a one-year contract and then looking again later on to see how that's working out. Uh also, we were, I don't think we've ever talked about just gifting funds and saying, good luck with it, let's see what happens. You will be coming back with a contract, correct? And we will be uh reviewing that contract. Uh as a board, it's not going to happen behind doors because it's within the the margins of what you can do.
Correct. Um it, as I said before, just because of the speed of the two organizations joining and um the transition with the directors, wanted to bring this item to board consideration before we had a agreement prepared. But we will be coming with one.
And I I just want to make a final statement just because the contract will come back to us. Uh it's the same comments I make to the Tourism Improvement District. Uh I would like to know how you're ensuring to advertise the entire county when a visitor comes to approach a visitor center to ensure that we're not just advertising very specific areas of Lake County because the entire county needs economic boost all over. And so if we can implement something of that kind of language in our uh expectation and reporting, uh that would be great.
Sure, we would be happy to.
Perspective.
All right. So any other comments?
Mr. Chair, I move that we transfer sixty thousand dollars from fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six Economic Development Housing and Risk Reduction Allocation from Cannabis Fund Zero Six Four to the Lake County Economic Development Corporation for twenty-six thousand dollars and the Lake County Chamber of Commerce for thirty-four thousand dollars with the expectation that our contract is coming or just transfer, make the transfer to the fund.
That can be made a part of the motion or via direction for your board?
I'm good with direction.
Direction.
Okay, direction.
Okay.
So I'll second the motion.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries five zero. All right, that covers this item of the agenda. Thank you. We're twelve oh nine. We will continue on because I see a lot of folks here for the next item. Um and then after that, we'll go to a lunch break. A presentation uh from Lake County Watershed Protection District, Water Resources Staff on the twenty-twenty-five Clear Lake Hitch Community Science Spawner Observation Program Summary and Outcomes Water Resources Director Poan Upadhyay and Chris Childress. Did I pronounce it right? Childress, sorry.
And Taylor Woodruff.
What's that?
And Taylor Woodruff.
Oh, yeah, and Taylor, and Taylor. Sorry about that. Yeah, any seat.
Uh good afternoon, everyone. It's Poan Upadhyay, Lake County Water Resource Director, and I have here with me
Chris Childers, uh Lake County Water Resources Department Program Coordinator.
And we also have
Uh Taylor Woodruff.
He wants it real close to, yeah. You can pull it, yeah, towards you, there you go.
Taylor Woodruff, uh Water Resources Protection District, um or sorry. Water Resources Department, Watershed Protection District, um technician for the Lake County um Clear Lake Hitch program.
Okay, um so I will read the executive summary. Um I will keep it brief because I know we are running a little behind. So um as your board is aware that the Clear Lake Hitch was listed as threatened um under the California Endangered Species Act in two thousand and fourteen. In twenty-twenty-two, there was a local call for action in response to the denial federal Endangered Species Species Act listing of the Clear Lake Hitch um in combination in in combination with low observations during the spawning season. So in February twenty-twenty-three, um your board declared a proclamation of the existence of a local emergency um due to persistent rot, habitat loss, and potential extinction of Clear Lake Hitch. Since then, collaboration collaborative effort have occurred among many local state, local state, tribal, and federal agencies. And in spring twenty-twenty-three, Lake County Water Resource Department uh and Watershed Protection District implemented a community science spawner observation program uh to monitor the Clear Lake Hitch um for which um our volunteers are the centerpiece for that program. And we thank our delegated community um science volunteer to participate in this program. And um we look forward to continuing this uh program in future efforts and um uh and for your support and for uh for the protection and recovery of Clear Lake Hitch. Um and um we really appreciate all the volunteers and their effort in making this program a success. So I will, um next, we will have a presentation uh which would be presented by Chris. And then we will have a brief Q and A session, like if anybody has any questions. Um and then we will have a appreciation for our volunteers and we will be giving out the hitch hat. Um and for the volunteers who are not present here today, um for them, the hat would be available at our uh Water Resources front desk.
Okay. Chair Crandall, board, um I'm going to be presenting today on Community Science Hitch Spawner Observation Survey, uh summary and outcomes. I want to second what Poan said. None of this would be possible without the amazing volunteers, so thank you so much. So we'll just start it off. What is community science? Uh it's a form of research that provides everyone, regardless of their background, an opportunity to contribute meaningful data to further our scientific understanding of key issues. In very simple terms, it's public participation in scientific research. So the purpose and the goals of this program, they're listed here. So basically, to monitor relative population trends over time to help with long-term conservation and management decisions. So monitoring has been So, monitoring is beneficial for presence and absence of before and after creek restoration projects and barrier removal efforts. Another purpose of this is community involvement, education, outreach, and engagement. It's great when the community can get together to look at these fish, observe these fish, and also be educated, because the more people that are educated about these fish, the more concerned and aware people are. Another goal here is to understand what extent hitch occupy creeks, what creeks are occupied, and how far upstream they migrate to spawn. So, when do hitch enter specific creeks? And how far up the creeks do they go? The picture on the right here is Forbes Creek, right by the baseball field. So, the survey design. So, all of our volunteers are required to attend training once a year. And so this training consists of in-person and field components. All the sites, the 33 sites, they're pre-selected for repeatability, so we can do this every year on the same site. These locations were monitored once a week for 10 weeks, starting on March 9, 2025. And most of them were at Bridge Crossings, other than a couple of the private property sites. So, private property owners are available, or they can adopt a, sorry. The community scientists adopt a pre-selected public site each year. The private property owners, they can sponsor a site, but we ask for five to 10 years. That way, we can look at this data and compare it over the years. One year of data, it's good, but if you have multiple years, then you can actually kind of like draw some conclusions. So, survey validation. So, with this survey, if the conditions are not ideal, then the survey is not conducted, and a reason would be listed. For example, dry, turbid, algal bloom, floating vegetation. So, water visibility, also known as turbidity, it reduces the ability to positively ID fish species. So, you can see the pictures here on the right. Like, in those scenarios, you would not conduct an observation. Fish ID confidence. Also, this is one of the things that's in our surveys, how confident are you with IDing these fish? So, our volunteers can say they're very confident, or they're not confident at all. And so that helps us, you know, kind of like validate the data that we are getting. And then also, this data is randomly selected for QA QC. So, we double-checked a few of these entries in the field, just to make sure they were accurate. So, here's a map of Lake County Clear Lake, and as you can see on the right here are all 33 of our sites with the GPS coordinates. They're located all over the lake. So, we have, you know, Bachelor Valley, Upper Lake, Lucerne, Clear Lake Oaks, Lower Lake, Big Valley, and Lakeport, and also Scotts Valley. So, this is a very broad survey, and it's encompassing many of the creeks that drain into Clear Lake. So, these are preliminary results for our, for the data that was collected. Now, the dataset on the right excludes records where hitch were not detected. So, as you can see here, we have a couple detections, or I think there's three of 1,000 fish on Adobe Creek. One was private property, and the other two were at Big Valley Road. So, this year, Adobe Creek had the most detections of fish. Now, that's not to say that any of these other creeks didn't have more fish than Adobe Creek. This is just simply, those fish were present at the site at the time of the survey. You can see Alley Creek had nine fish, Clover 99, Forbes 16, Kelsey 25, Manning 52, Siegler 1, and Thompson Creek 50. And also, these, the Adobe Creek 1,000 fish sites, those were double-checked by Taylor and myself, because that's a lot of fish to report. And we went out and validated that it was definitely accurate. So, here's like, here's a heat map of basically all the sites that fish were observed this year. So, as you can see, like, Upper Lake and Big Valley had, and Forbes Creek and Lakeport had the most observations. There was one fish observed in Siegler Canyon as well, but it's covered up by one of those black dots on the bottom, right? So, for anybody listening, or who wants to be involved, or get involved in the future, yearly training is mandatory. And basically, it's instruction on fish identification, as I mentioned before, in-person and field training. So, Taylor and I would conduct that. And if you would like to sign up for the 2026 observations, feel free to contact either myself, or Taylor, or Water Resources Department, and we'd love to get you on that list. The observers that have already participated in the 2025 data collection are going to get first priority for the 2026 survey. Okay, at this point, we will take questions and comments, and then we will thank the wonderful volunteers.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Pau An. Thank you, Taylor. Supervisor Sabatier?
Thank you for the report. I'll have to sign up in February. Give you more than molesworth. I am wondering, the number compared to the years past, what was that? Or does it really just depend how many volunteers you have, and how many people are out there? But just kind of a comparison?
So, this is actually the very first year this survey has, yeah.
Before, it wasn't citizen science, it was just others from the department that were looking at it, and others from the tribes that were looking at it, rather than doing the citizen science. Gotcha.
Yeah, so that, the district has two years of internal data collection, but this community science, and the district program has 14 sites, and with the two years of data collection, the community science has 33 sites, and this is the very first year. And the purpose of this is to compare the data over the years to come to conclusions.
That's the question, but too early. Do you know at what point, and just kind of moving forward from that, at what point, because we've been getting like fish tests from the lake to give us numbers, do you know when we'll get that from, I don't know if it's USGS, or if it's CDFA, FA, Fish and Wildlife? Do you know when they'll be redoing a number of fish that they catch, and they attribute that to the potential population of hitch that is in the lake?
So, I believe you're talking about the USGS study, the GilNet study, which went, that was, that's done every June, and so that was done this year. I don't, not sure if the preliminary data is out on that yet, or not, so.
Because it'd be interesting just to see their numbers, first off, just to see the trend. Are we doing better, are we doing worse? And then to also compare the citizen science numbers to their numbers, and kind of get an idea of what the citizen science numbers mean in comparison.
Sure, yeah. And all these reports are posted on our website, so anytime we get a USGS report, or, you know, CDFW, or anything like that, it's all on the website.
Thank you. Like the hats, by the way.
And I think the district survey is also running in parallel, so even we have this community science one, so we do one parallel the district survey as well.
That's perfect. Vice Chair?
Yeah, I just, I appreciate all the work that went into this program, and opening it up for the community, to give that opportunity for folks to be involved and learn more. And, of course, this is just one aspect of all of the hitch work that's going on, so I think, you know, it's definitely an asset to adding to all that other data that we have, to continue to work on this in the future. Thank you.
Was there a Coal Creek site? Yes.
Yes, there are. There's two, one on Clark Drive, and one on Siler.
They just didn't have a lot of results, or?
So
Timing?
Well, Coal Creek is very turbid, and so it's harder to see fish in there, but, yeah, I'm pretty sure there were fish in Coal Creek this year.
We saw them.
It's also the timing of the, you know, the timing of the observation, so it's just once a week, and you show up, if you don't see any fish, that's it.
Right.
You know, if you see fish, it's going to, you're going to be there for a while, counting them.
All right, so I'll open it up for public comment. Come on up.
Good afternoon. Again, great work. I have a couple questions. Highland Springs Reservoir, I know there's a, I understand there's a population of hitch inside the reservoir. Couple questions on that. Has there been any evidence of migration up Highland Creek? If so, how far? Combined with that is, I know there's an intention to raise the level of the reservoir, and how will that benefit the hitch? And then as far as things like turbidity and other limiting factors, to get a good understanding of population, has there been a consideration of doing DNA testing of the water for the presence of hitch? I know, for example, in the Midwest, where they have invasive carp, they use DNA testing to see if there's a presence for that species, to see if there's actually, how far up they go up. So anyways, those are my questions. Thank you.
So, to address your first question, the district survey for the past two years does have one site upstream of Highland Reservoir, and so we do have data collection there. Taylor could probably elaborate on what was, what has been seen there, but I don't believe any hitch have been observed there. However, we did, we have seen roach and Sacramento sucker, juvenile. Your second question about raising the dam, and how that would affect?
Yeah, we could probably cover that offline, because we're talking about the observation and the livelihood of the fish. We could look at that.
Let's have this conversation about the DNA also, because that's actually really neat.
All right, is there, come on up.
Now, it's good afternoon, you all. Michelle Scully, I'm a member of your Fish and Wildlife Advisory Committee, and I used to work for you all. I want to thank the Fish and Wildlife Committee. This was a topic of discussion when we're all wrangling around about what to do with hitch numbers, and people saying, "Well, I saw this, and I saw that," and that's always the case in anecdotal reporting. And Clear Lake Environmental Research Center had an app where people could go and make observations, and yet, when that was brought forward, there was concern saying, "Well, how is that information vetted?" Because it's basically like, you're making a fruit salad and just throwing things together. So, it was not apples to apples. So, in our Fish and Wildlife Committee, we had this discussion, and I'd like to thank Angela DePalma Dow, who was with Water Resources at the time, for really taking that forward. And I know that she brought it to your department, and Taylor was really active on that, and Chris. And, like, before we knew it, at our next meeting, we had like a beta test of it, where we had the app, and we could go through it, and I was like, "When does stuff like this ever happen so quickly?" And it was really, really cool. So, I feel like my brain is a Venn diagram about this, because I wanted to make sure that they, Angela and Chris and Taylor, and everyone who made this happen, are thanked properly. I wanted to thank the Fish and Wildlife Committee for being an active voice in that. And also, in terms of Supervisor Sabatier's comment in the earlier item about collaboration, we don't see that very often, and when we do, it tends to be intermittent and sporadic. But, speaking as a person who's taught science from third grade up to community college, I am always astounded when I see the lack of scientific background in our students, and I believe especially in an environment. I'm sorry, I'm like severely dehydrated, because I've been here a long time. Anyway, severely depleted in critical thought in our community and world today. And when I was teaching science at Mendocino College, I was teaching biology, I said, "If you leave here with nothing else but the ability to vet information critically, because one day, something really important is going to happen to you, and you're going to need to know that you're able to go out there and figure it out without being propagandized or swayed by misinformation." So, that's always been a passion of mine. So, for these guys to do this, and you guys to support it, opening it up as a community model, I think is huge. And in terms of our kids in STEM in the future, I think it would be really cool if this model gets going, and we could use it for other things. Ages ago, I was asked to teach, create and teach the ecology of Clear Lake at Mendocino College with no resources, so I interfaced with existing resources. And to see the people's faces when they actually had hands on, and how that information goes into your head, is huge. And I'm super sorry I went over, but there's a lot of stuff here. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thanks, Michelle.
Thanks, Michelle. My name is Angela DePalma Dow. I'm a current Executive Director of Lake County Land Trust. And our President of our Board, Val Nixon, had a site, she did Kelsey Creek, and then we also had a site on our Kuanapoe wetland property here in Lakeport, so we were volunteers. We did the trainings, they were very well done, very exciting, it's a fun time. So, good job, Taylor and Chris, for doing that. And then I just wanted to say that we, or this, the Water Resources Department and the district presented to the Water Board, the State Water Regional Board, in December in Rancho Cordova. I was there with Taylor, and we did our presentation, everybody did their presentations. One of the things the board members asked about was this program, and they were excited. They're like, "You guys are doing a hitch observation, community science program? That's exciting. Tell us more about that. When are we going to get that going?" So, I just want to put on the radar, there's been a lot of talk about, you know, community involvement, education. That's great, but just know, the state is looking at this, and there's been a lot of stuff from the state down, interest in droughts and water levels, Clear Lake Hitch as a listed species on the pathway for federal listing at some point, but that this program is going to be looked at as a model, and as much as whatever you could do to support it, make it strong, give it resources, and use that, use this program, the data, it's developing the way that you're teaching it, the way that it could be involved in collaboration and education. Use that to be more resourceful, and get resources funneled to the county, and funneled to the department, and funneled into the community for that. So, and you'll have support from the state, because they're really excited, interested about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, Julia Carrera Worth, Chair Lead for the Levy Subcommittee. Thank you to Chris, Taylor, Pau An, the department, and Angela for bringing a citizen science program forward for Lake County, and thank you to the Board of Supervisors for supporting a citizen science program. I think it's the key to the future of Lake County, particularly our lake, and the more we can promote citizen science in Lake County, the better. And we'd also like to thank you for getting excavation going on the gravel in the Upper Lake Levy System this week. Yay! Thank you.
Is there anyone else that has a comment about this? All right. We have someone coming, two people coming up.
Good afternoon, Board. Margot Cambara. I want to thank everybody in Water Resources and Angela DePalma Dow, formerly of Water Resources, for their excellent work in bringing citizen science to Lake County. Thank you so much. And as Michelle Scully stated, we have great opportunity here to expand this concept, this learning model, to other sectors of education, so we have great critical thinkers within our community. So, thank you. I'm sorely disappointed that I missed training this year, and I'm looking forward to signing up for 2026. Thank you.
How are you guys doing today? Mosho Anderson, community member. I first want to acknowledge the hitch itself for surviving through all the environmental changes and life changes they've had to experience, and they're still here. And all the droughts, but I also want to really acknowledge the tribes, because without the tribes spearheading this and using it as a food source, but also spearheaded in early, in the early 2000s, the programs like this wouldn't be. And, you know, so, I really am thankful for the program. I think creating awareness on a greater whole, especially with our greater community, our younger generations, will create greater awareness and whole for native species in our lake. So, I think that's, that's great. I just want to make sure the tribes are still really spearheading it. And I, you know, I'm not, maybe this next year, I'll be a part of the program, but I wasn't, but I was an observer, and so, when I first seen the hitch this year, I went down every single day with my kids after school, and so, and what I seen was, I would see high populations behind like tribal health, or Coal Creek, and then the next day, I would see low numbers. And the next day, I would probably see low numbers or high numbers, it was diverse. So, I think, you know, the numbers are really good, but, you know, they could probably either be higher, depending they could probably either be higher depending on if people went more than once a week, you know, so thanks.
Thank you, Tomash. Thank you for staying on task as well. Come on up.
Good afternoon. My name is Nazba Ben. I work with Scotts Valley Band of Pomo Indians, but I also have children and my husband are enrolled members there. I'm a member of the Navajo Nation and have lived here for about 14 years now. I'm also a trained environmental scientist focusing on environmental planning. My work has always been in validating traditional ecological knowledge and Native American sciences in traditional and Western science points of view. And this is the first project where I genuinely feel that the work that the tribes have been doing for centuries is getting a place in county work and being validated through the county. But it, and Jessica Pisca, thank you for saying that you know they're there. You know they're there because you've seen them. That's our fight. That's our struggle. We know the fish are there. We've seen them. And I always tell these guys that since my kids have been born, I've worked with them on saving hitches, hitches and ditches. We go out in the spring, we find them, we throw them back in the lake. Not ideal, but, don't record me. Not ideal, but it's the survival instinct for the people that have lived here and have thrived and continue to survive on their natural resources. So I just wanted to put that out there and also state that this year I was a community scientist, but I've always been native. I've always been looking out for these little creatures, even though I don't know what they are. They're slimy, they're gross. I still don't understand them. But that I've been looking at these fish for 15 years. And this year, being a community scientist, I did not see a single one in my designated spot. So they're there. We know they're there. We've seen them throughout our lives. And just thank you for giving the living example of validating what we know as native people, that they are there, they are valid. And that's all I want to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Nazba. Any other, any other comments? All right, with that, on Zoom, we'll bring it to Zoom. All right, Donna, go ahead and unmute.
Hello, I'm Donna Mackelitz from Clear Lake Oaks. I was proud to be the Schindler Creek Monitor. I appreciate all the hard work that brought this project forward. Thanks especially to Chris, Angela, and to Taylor, whose enthusiasm for hitch is really infectious. So thank you, and I'm so happy this is going to continue. Good job.
Thank you, Donna. All right, no more hands in Zoom. We'll close that portion of it. Supervisor Pisca, if you wanted.
Well, I want to thank everyone that came today to give comment and everyone that is participating in this program. I love the hats. I hope I can get one one day. But I just want to also remind everyone that when we, when we declared the hitch emergency, we funded two positions with Water Resources so that we could actually do the work within the department, with the county, so that we could really have skin in the game, do our part and collaborate. It is the work that has resulted from these two general funded positions. So I just want to remind everyone that we did that so that we could get here. Because it does take money, it does take attention, it does take resources and commitment. And that is the commitment that we've been working towards. And so I'm really delighted to see the success of this program and that it is getting noticed at this stage because it is important. And, and this was our commitment. So I'm really, really grateful to see that it's, it's been successful and will continue to be successful.
All right, if there's nothing else, we'll go ahead and close this portion of the agenda. And we thank you again for this presentation. Thank you, everyone who came to talk about the hitch. Yeah, we all want a hat.
Want a hat?
We bring them up.
Butterflies, though.
I'm always wearing a hat, so I needed an excuse to look nice.
All right, so with that, we are at a good stopping point here. We're a little behind, but we'll go ahead and stop here at 12:40 and come back. 1:40? All right, we'll see you then.